All right, well, call the meeting in order at 7:05. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
This time we'd like to open the floor, or I'd like to open the floor, to any citizens' comments. All right, so moving on to the chair's report, we have an open meeting law complaint that we actually have to take care of tonight.
It's in there.
It's in here somewhere.
Is it?
It's in our packet?
No, it didn't.
I don't think it was, because you'd sent it out to the committee when you got it.
Are you taking questions, or what are we doing?
So, well, first is to bring everything up to speed on...
Came in on the... You sent it to the whole committee on the 19th.
So, um...
My kid should have stayed.
We received, all right, I think that's the violation is 3-6. Got it. So, so Janice Bertrand filed an open meeting law violation. On 6th of March, there was a board of registrars meeting, both Stacy Mannerick and Peter Walczek testified under oath that there was a discussion of the superintendent contract during the December 27th, 2018 meeting. The subcommittee was not posted to discuss this matter, nor should it have been discussed outside of executive session, a fact for which Peter stated in the December 27th meeting. While the minutes in the meeting are not yet available, the video recording can be found here, gives the YouTube site, starting at 31 minutes, 47 seconds in. Actually, we want the public to take a response. The minutes of December 27th should be struck from the record until they can be corrected and resubmitted for subcommittee approval. So, there was a, I think five at the time, committee members there, excuse me, and I remember actually calling to attention the fact that the discussion they were talking about wasn't present in the minutes. This is actually wrong in that it says that the discussing the superintendent contract needed to be held in executive session. That is not the case. It could actually, could be held in open session, but the fact remains that the Capitol's subcommittee was not charged with that discussion, nor was it posted for that discussion. So now I guess I'd be open to questions or comments.
So, I have a couple of comments about it. One is that this is related to something that happened, is it December 27th? Is that correct?
Yep.
So, the open meeting law says that if you believe a violation has happened, you need to file that within 30 days. So I would say that this is untimely, and therefore that should be our response.
So, well, the violation's actually charged with the discussion that happened on March the 6th. I mean...
That is not what I'm reading at all.
So, it says on March the 6th, there was a board registrars meeting. It actually specifically says on March the 6th, discussing the meeting of the 27th.
So, what is the violation?
So...
The violation happened at the hearing?
So, yeah.
So, how did the violation happen at the hearing? What minutes are to be struck? The minutes of the hearing?
The minutes of the December 27th meeting.
Okay, so did the violation happen on December 27th, or did the, did the violation happen at the hearing?
The...
What does it say for the date that it happened?
March 6th, the discussion.
So, in that case, there was no meeting at all that day? So, there's, it isn't possible for an open meeting law violation to happen unless they're saying that there was a, that we discussed something within our jurisdiction that, outside of a posted meeting, but we didn't, we were at a hearing.
So, which was a posted?
Meeting.
Meeting.
So, an open line, meeting violation could not have happened. We were not there as committee members, we were there as individuals, and we were participating in a public meeting of the Board of Registars.
So, I'm happy to push this, to see if it holds mustard.
I'm, I'm saying it's untimely. So, at that point right there, it's untimely, and that could be the response.
I have a response to this.
Uh-huh.
Dear Ms. Bertrand, this letter is in response to your open meeting law complaint filed with the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee on March 12th, 2019. In the complaint, you allege on December 27th, 2018, a subcommittee of the school committee deliberated on a matter not included on the post agenda. Additionally, you state the matter should have been discussed in executive session. The complaint was filed with the Chair of the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee. The committee believes the complaint is about a subcommittee of the committee and not the committee itself. The subcommittee is a three-member board. The complainant is one of the members. Since the subcommittee met in open session on December 27th, all matters discussed at that meeting were knowable at that time. The minutes show, and the complainant has made the statement, that she was in attendance of that meeting. The open meeting law requires a complaint to be filed within 30 days of alleged violation. As such, the complaint is untimely. The committee finds your claims are unfounded. The agenda must include all items the Chair anticipates will be discussed 48 hours in advance. The Chair of the subcommittee did not anticipate the discussion 48 hours in advance. The members of the subcommittee have different recollections of what occurred during the meeting. There is agreement that during the meeting, the subcommittee addressed concern with prioritizing the list of capital needs, as they did not have the information that they felt they needed from the superintendent's office. The topic led to a robust discussion about the working relationships of the school committee and the superintendent. During this discussion, the complainant made statements that resulted in her being removed from voter rolls and the committee. The open media law defines deliberations as an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business with its, within its jurisdiction. The charge of the subcommittee is to review and make recommendations to the committee on the capital and finance matters. The matter of the superintendent's contract is not a matter within the jurisdiction of the subcommittee. Any discussion between the three members of the subcommittee would not constitute a quorum of the seven-member school committee, which has jurisdiction of the matter of the contract for the superintendent. The committee considered this matter resolved, and no further action is necessary.
So, I don't fully agree with that. I mean, we, if you think that's the response, we could send it and see if it's satisfactory, but...
Send it where?
It's an open meeting law violation. We'd actually send it to whoever, to Janice.
Send it to Janice, and the, okay.
So, at which point she can decide whether or not it's satisfactory.
Also, the complaint says that I testified under oath that it was discussed, but if you look at time index, 1 hour, 26 minutes, and 39 seconds, I very clearly say it was not discussed, and only capital expenditures was, was discussed. So, her complaint is factually inaccurate, and all she had to do is look at the tape to see what I said under oath, that it was not discussed.
Okay, we might have a bigger problem with that then, because there were actually other people in the office that day who actually said the discussion did happen.
Well, in fact, you can ask Ms. Bertrand, because she recorded the meeting. Ask her for the audio recording on her phone, which I requested from her that she did not provide. So, this could be all cleared up if she provides the auto, audio recording of the meeting she made on her telephone. Pretty straightforward. It all could be resolved if she just provides that audio recording. That's...
So, do I need a...
Evidence right there. And there's no recollection, all the recollection is taken out of it.
Good.
And she also had plenty of time to, you know, she even said that, she could have, you know, she never changed the minutes at all, and she knew about the minutes.
So, it, now the board as a whole has to discuss whether or not the response Stacy drafted is the response we want to send in regard to this old law violation. Back to Ms. Bertrand. If I remember correctly, at that point, we sent a response to her, and that would, and then she can choose to accept it or move it forward.
You have to send it to both her and the Attorney General's Office.
So...
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm, I'm just looking for feedback from the board at this point, or the committee, rather.
I guess I'm still trying to understand Janice's complaint here. She's saying that the subcommittee was not posted discussing issue of the topic of the superintendent's contract? Is that what her, is that...
Yeah, so in the video, I'm going to watch the whole thing, just watch a couple of minutes. They're saying that the discussion around where the whole fiasco happened was a result of, talking about whether or not Janice should have a vote in extending Dr. Harvey's contract, which, you know, it, as an aside, this was actually in the middle of contract negotiating students with Dr. Harvey at the time, which, you know, is kind of infuriating that this was even happening in his office.
Because it wasn't happening.
We didn't, we didn't discuss it.
We did not have that discussion.
It was all about capital plan.
Again, I had people within the office who have actually communicated to me.
She has a recording of it. Please go to the recording, and it would end the discussion immediately.
So, that's where the nature of the complaint is from.
Well, can we ask her to provide a copy of the video, the audio recording, so we can review it and make a more informative response to her? I mean, if in fact she made it.
Right.
It would, as Peter says, it would solve a lot, it would answer a lot of questions that people who weren't there can't.
She said she was recording it. She put her phone in the middle of the table and said she was recording this.
Even if it were true, it's untimely. She, she should have submitted the open law meeting violation within 30 days of that happening. So even, even, even if it were true, there was not an open law meeting violation complaint filed, so there's no way that you can, it should be said it's untimely and just move on.
So, if the violation was not reasonably discoverable at the time it occurred, you must file the complaint within 30 days, the data violation was reasonably discoverable, which would be the...
Right, she was in the meeting on the 27th. She was able to discover it on December 27th.
And how come she, and also, if this was true, how come she changed, how come she never questioned minutes at all, or said anything?
Jesus, how many minutes I signed that I never even look at?
I can't, couldn't hear what you said.
I've signed so many minutes that I never even look at.
Well, she, she, under oath, said that she knew about these minutes and decided it wasn't important to say anything. She said, under oath, on this March 6th meeting, too, it's in, it's taped, so, you know, at the same time, there was another time where she said she knew about the minutes, and she decided they weren't important, so she didn't change them.
Wait, that March 6th meeting in the Wentham Town Hall? That wasn't recorded? It was recorded, but it wasn't video?
Yeah, it was video. It was. It's on YouTube.
Oh, because he said it wasn't...
Time index, 1, 1 hour, 26 minutes, and 39 seconds.
Because he said that there weren't any video tapes.
Look at how little you're to me.
Surprise.
Well, I'm, I'm okay, I can agree with Michelle's rationale that it wasn't done within 30 days of December 27th. I mean, I'm not entirely sure, I, that's all I can agree to. I can't agree to anything else.
And I think it's hard not to agree with the timeliness issue if, in fact, she was part of the subcommittee that met on December 27th. I do think there's a problem with the timeliness of the complaint.
So, okay, so do you think we should just send out the response Stacy just read?
Hmm, I would not. I would just say a simple sentence that...
Doesn't meet the...
Doesn't meet the, doesn't meet the criteria of having been filed within 30 days of...
Should I have Naomi drafted up then?
Is that the normal course of action?
That's what I think we've done in the past, yeah.
Yeah, then we should probably continue that protocol.
All right. So, can we take a vote on that, just to make it official?
I just, I would be reluctant to send the, I mean, I think if, if Stacy's statement is, is factually truthful, I don't think we should, I don't think we need to tie ourselves down to all of that information if, in fact, we can, it's evident that she didn't do it timely. I think we need to leave it at that.
So...
Want a motion, or Stacy gonna make a motion, or?
Stacy said someone's gonna make a...
Do you want to do it?
Oh, you can. All right, I, I moved that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee...
Respond to the...
Respond to the complaint in, Janice Bertrand regarding her open meeting law violation, that she did not meet the timeliness standard in producing a notice of violation within 30 days of the incident occurring, and that we have our district's attorney draft that statement.
Second.
Office of favor? All right. Moving on, that's all I have for the chair's report, superintendent report.
Couple of announcements. Kindergarten registration will be held at the district offices over 5 School Street in Wentham on next Monday, April 1st, and that, and it'll run through Friday, April 5th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. Additional registrations will be taken from 2:00 in the afternoon until 6:00 in the evening on Wednesday, April 6th. All the registration information and the required forms are available on the district website, hwschools.net. The Hamilton-Wentham League of Women Voters will host its annual Candidates Night on Wednesday, April 3rd at 7:00 p.m., right here in the multipurpose room at the Bucker Elementary School. Come by and hear from the candidates who are up for election on April 11th. We have a program on vaping at the high school, and it's called "The New Look of Nicotine Addiction", vaping and e-cigarettes, a discussion for parents will be presented on April 2nd in the high school library at 7:00 o'clock. The program will feature hidden and plain sight, along with the Hamilton Police Department. Hidden and plain sight is a mock-up of a teenager's bedroom for parents to take a look at. Doors will open for a hidden and plain sight program at 5:30 p.m. Hamilton-Wentham Regional High School's chapter of the National Honor Society will be offering childcare services during annual town meeting on April 6th. Childcare is offered for children in kindergarten through 5th grade, and will take place in the Hamilton-Wentham Recreation Center, which adjoins the public library. Hamilton's annual town meeting will begin at 9:00 a.m. in the Ferney Auditorium at the high school, and Wentham's town meeting will begin at 1:00 in the Bucker School Gymnasium. And I'll send out the link on my blog for the signups for childcare. Miles River Middle School, the Fine and Performing Arts Department at Miles River Middle School invites the public to join them on Tuesday, April 9th, from 6:30 until 8:00 p.m. for their annual arts night. The evening's program will begin at 6:30 p.m. and feature performances from the school's choral and instrumental groups, school-wide art celebration, and an excerpt from the student-created one-act play. And then finally, congratulations to high school senior Aiden Heaney for winning this year's Massachusetts 6th District Congressional Art Competition. The competition is sponsored by the Congressional Institute to recognize and encourage artistic talent in the nation and in each congressional district. The winners are recognized in their home district and at an award ceremony in Washington, D.C. So, congratulations.
Two things, one, he had like an amazing week last week. His dad was like all over Facebook. Like, everything in the world could happen to him last week.
So, the, the home district celebration was, was last week with Congressman Moulton, and I was assuming he was going to go to Washington.
That PC was, was awesome.
Yeah, it was great.
I'm a snob, so.
Why did this shut off?
That's it?
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, so now we're gonna...
Why the projector shut off?
Move on, the consent agenda, always, always, there's a presentation coming up.
February 5th minutes and warrants from March 13th, so, seems like we're behind on minutes. But, go ahead.
I move that the Hamilton-Wentham Regional School Committee approved the consent agenda for the minutes of February 5th, 2019, and the warrants for March 13th, 2019. There can be no changes. Second.
Discussion? All those a favor? That's unanimous. All right, to new business. First up, we have Rockland Trust, and it's working. Going to give us a in-depth presentation on the OPEB trust fund.
So, I'll give my friends from Rockland Trust a, an introduction. So, we have Margaret Vos and Matt Roddy with us tonight from Rockland Trust Investment Management Group. If the committee recalls, on January 2nd, I made a lengthy, lengthy presentation around our OPEB trust fund creation and funding strategy for the next 30 years. We've discussed that several times throughout the budget cycle. I had Margie and her team lined up to come and make this presentation in late January, and we deferred that presentation. So, it was supposed to be much more closely linked to the presentation that I gave on January 2nd, but for, for good reason, we had to put it off. So, they've been kind enough to join us tonight, and they're going to take us through what they have to offer, and more about the OPEB trust fund process and the next steps. So, I'll hand it to you. Welcome.
And thank you, Hamilton-Wentham Regional School District, for awarding Rockland Trust this business. It's very important to us. We are dedicated to the municipal business, and OPEB is near and dear to our hearts, believe it or not. So, I'll just tell you a little bit about Rockland Trust on page 3, for those of you who may not have heard of us. We're a full-service community bank headquartered in Massachusetts. We, strong footprint in the South Shore, Cape Cod and the Islands, but through acquisitions, we're growing north and west of the city. Next week, we'll complete our acquisition of Blue Hills Bank, based in Hyde Park, but that'll bring us to an $11 billion bank from the 8.8, when this was printed, in deposits, about 100 branches. So, we're really increasing our community stance there. A lot of smaller banks are kind of raising their hands and needing capital and compliance, and our cultures match up with theirs. So, it's really a nice story. So, Rockland's very acquisitive. We're also the sole banking subsidiary of Independent Bank Corp., listed on the NASDAQ. So, just play back that. The Investment Management Group on the next page, or IMG, you'll hear us refer to it, is where Matt and I are employed. 3.8 billion in assets under management are separate from the deposits I spoke about. We invest for municipalities, nonprofits, corporations, but we have a dedicated team to municipalities. As you know, Mass General Law has its nuances, and we have expertise in the Mass General Law. We have 75 investment professionals, a team of eight CFA charter holders. So, on the left of this page is a definition of what the CFA is, and that's an in-depth designation that you want when somebody's managing your money. So, it's a CFA, one of the eight on our staff. We're one of the largest investment advisors, investment advisors in greater Boston, and we have eight investment offices around town. So, Boston would be the closest one here. But we do have a deep bench covering the whole geography. On the next page, 5, we'll just go over the team, and we are very much a team. I am designated for a business development, identifying opportunities, coordinating resources with the clients, with prospects, with, we work with actuaries, we work with Odyssey Advisors quite frequently on their clients. Barbara Howard is our relationship manager. She would be kind of your day-to-day point person, and specializes in Mass General Law, record-keeping, understanding nuances to all the different school districts. We manage many regional school districts and many collaborative school districts, so. Brian Callow, who couldn't be here tonight, he's another CFA, he would be dedicated to your account, but as you can see, we have a deep bench, we've got Matt, we've got, you know, whatever supply you need. We also have Deborah Hayes and Rebecca Tavoris on our government banking side, so they do depository services, vendor payroll, and money can be moved between the Investment Management Group and the deposit side. So, it's not necessary, it's just another convenience. And with that, I will turn it over to Matthew Roddy, who will introduce himself.
Hello, Matt Roddy, I'm a portfolio manager within our Investment Management Group. I sit on the Investment Committee, which is an important statement. I'm one of 13 members of the Investment Committee. We all work together to design the portfolios for our clients, and then we go out individually to basically bring that best thinking and that process to the clients individually. So, we meet on a weekly basis to go over everything from, if it's equity selection or investment management, you know, managers or asset allocation, it's a group process. I think that's important because, you know, it puts a little bit more, a lot more, I guess, intellectual capital into the process, and also, you know, if anyone gets hit by the proverbial boss, I guess, you know, the consistent process can be applied across, across relationships or someone moves on or whatnot. So, the way I describe our investment management process overall is it's a four-pillar process. If you take nothing else away, think about that as far as how we manage money, because I think that helps frame it. The most important pillar in the process is on page 6, it's our asset allocation process. Our asset allocation process for, you know, for OPEBs and municipalities has to be adjusted and made proper for what, what the, what the Massachusetts laws require. But overall, we're, we're still doing a lot of the same things. We're designing portfolios to get the proper risk-adjusted returns. We're not trying to time the markets. I think a lot of people, should we be in, should we be out, should we be trimming, should we be buying? We stay consistently invested and rebalance around the risk tolerance and the targets that are set out for the long-term benefit of these funds, because we don't believe timing the markets is all that possible. And, you know, if you need certain longer time horizons and more growth, we can, we can design that, and shorter time horizons and a little bit lower growth is needed, then we can design that. And so, that's how we think about asset allocation. But that, that's really the most important part of anyone's portfolio, and it won't be different in the case of these funds as well. The reason why we do asset allocation is on page 7. You can look here, this is just one-time snapshot of how different asset classes have performed over the last five years. You can take three years, you can take 10 years, and these things fluctuate quite a bit. And knowing what's going to be on top or on bottom next year is really, really difficult, but when you're trying to shoot for a 5% to 6% return, if you blend them all together over time, you know, or 7% or 8%, depending on how you blend them together, you know, you can, you can reach those goals in a more consistent manner. It's about narrowing... It's about narrowing the goalposts between the tough years and the good years. There'll be years you might make twenty percent, there might be years when the portfolio can go down a lot, but you're trying to get to that, to that six or seven or eight percent return that's gonna be required in, in, in the structure that, that we set up for you, uh, as a committee. Um, the second pillar in the process is fixed income. So, when you think about the whole pie chart, as, if it will, that's the asset allocation, and then there's a part of your portfolio in that pie chart, uh, that's gonna be core fixed income. It's gonna be treasuries, it's gonna be agencies, it's gonna be really high-quality corporate bonds. And once again, we're not trying to time that, we're not trying to stay, we should be short or we should be long, you know, as far as how, how we invest. We're trying to basically cover all the bases. We're covering all the bases by having longer-dated bonds, we're covering all the bases by having shorter-term bonds, intermediate-term bonds, we're buying treasuries and agencies that we can buy itself pretty quickly, and then we're buying corporates to get extra yield, but high-quality business corporates. You'd know ninety-five percent of the names, we're gonna buy the Coca-Colas and the water and whatnot. Um, you know, we do that also focusing on the main component, which is liquidity. We wanna be able to get in and out of bonds effectively for you. You might need the funds at some, at certain points, uh, for paying out. We need to be able to sell bonds in a way that doesn't cost you excess, you know, excess, cost you in return or, or in liquidity. So, that's our fixed income process. Uh, the next couple pages just speak to the success of it. It's telling you that our annualized returns, uh, since Brian Callow's fixed-income team, uh, and, and the OPEB, they've had higher returns and lower risk than the index itself. That's on page nine. Um, in addition, it shows you how we performed in negative quarters. We will tell anyone who will listen, and we mean it, that our biggest job, uh, is to, is to protect when the markets are down. When things are going bad, that's when people make the mistake of maybe not, not putting money into the OPEB account or changing their allocation or getting in or out. So, this just shows you that when negative fixed-income environments come along, we do very well. Uh, we protected in almost every down, down period for fixed income, except for one, uh, in two thousand thirteen, when there was a twist in the, in the, in the, in the overall of yield curve. Um, on the core equity side, on page eleven, this is the third pillar in the process. And our core equity process is, 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 you know, very robust. We, we screen down and invest only in the highest-quality businesses. It's not something we just call them high-quality. We're using independent rating services that judge these companies on their profitability, their, um, you know, consistency of earnings, their, their moat, how, you know, how, how hard it would be to replicate their business. And so, the quality of the business is, is first and foremost. The other thing we do to protect in downsides, down markets, is we equal-weight the sectors. We believe that sectors, um, cap- capital gets misallocated. You see the tech sector run up, and then you see the tech sector sell off, like in two thousand, or you see the financial sector run up in two thousand six and seven, and then you see it sell off. By staying very disciplined and having ten percent exposure to every sector, you get a much more muted downside when the, when the, when the fan, you know, starts reversing the other way. Um, so, it's, it's high-quality business, equal-sector weighting, and those, those two components have done a very good job of protecting down markets. Uh, page twelve is a look at, well, another reason why we do it. Basically, uh, higher-quality businesses over the, over the, over the long-term do better, and they do better with lower risk. And most of that risk, when, you know, doing better is when the markets are down. That's when they do better. Last quarter, uh, in the fourth quarter, when things were really, really tough, that's when we shined. That was one of our best quarters in years, as an example, 'cause we had high-quality businesses, we weren't overexposed to technology and other sectors, it really had kinda run up, and so, we protected, you know, very strongly in the fourth quarter last year, and we're in the top ten percent of managers. So, every piece of the, the process, the pillars, are all about downside protection. The last pillar, we don't have a slide about it, um, but if you're looking, uh, at slide thirteen, I've told you about asset allocation, which is the full pie chart there. I've told you about the core equity, which is, uh, in this pie chart on page thirteen is, is the thirty percent for a balanced portfolio. I've told you about the core fixed income, which is also the other thirty percent slice of the pie. The fourth pillar is manager selection. We, we buy all these different asset classes, that, that's the broad diversification, and we have a process for selecting managers that also have the same qualities we have around downside protection in their various asset classes, be it real estate, or small-cap stocks, or international stocks, or high-yield bonds. We're looking for the lower-risk downside-protection managers in their different respective asset classes, which represent all these little slices of the pie. Okay? And, and the reason why, and so, our process works is, this, this page also sort of indicates our down-the-middle balanced portfolio, which a lot of, uh, um, you know, municipalities select for OPEB money, because it's a little bit more of an all-weather, covering all the bases evenly, uh, strategy. And you'd see here that, you know, it's averaged about six-and-a-half percent return, uh, over the last twenty-two years that we've been modeling this, this portfolio. It has a lower risk profile and the annualized volatility in the second line on page thirteen. And then, it just shows you how it did in a, in a down period, too. In two thousand eight, a really bad year, um, you can see it was down nineteen percent, and it's down, you know, the markets in general were down twenty-point-five on the left-hand side. The right-hand side is our allocation, the left-hand side's a more, less diversified, more traditional asset allocation. And you can see it's kept up pretty much since, since inception, I mean, since March of oh-nine, when we've been in a bull market run. So, just sort of trying to point out, you know, that it's a downside-protection strategy, and quite frankly, that's when you're gonna wanna have the hard, you're gonna have the hard conversations about getting additional funding and things like that, and so, that's why I think, you know, getting a portfolio strategy like this makes sense. And then, there's also another pie chart on page fourteen, this is our growth allocation. This allocation actually, um, is also a very good, good selection for long-term OPEB-type money. The challenge sometimes with, with this allocation is it does have bigger downside. It has more money allocated to equities and higher-risk assets. Instead of it being sort of split fifty-fifty-ish, it's more like seventy-five, twenty-five, uh, for equities, so there's more risk. And you can see in two thousand eight, you know, it was down twenty-six percent versus twenty-nine, and you can imagine having that conversation about getting more money, uh, into the OPEB funds after a year like that. So, while this has probably the better, it does have the better long-term returns, it might suit, uh, the long-term needs. If you don't, if you're not consistent about it, and you're not consistently sort of putting money in when those years happen, if, if it causes any undue fright, then these numbers don't add up in the end, and that's what we're trying to get to, is the end. So, sometimes being a little safer can actually get you to a better spot in the end if it's gonna, if, if it's gonna keep you on the, on the pace of what you need to do, annual, with annual contributions. And, and if you look on page fifteen, this is what I was kind of talking about. You look at a one-year for the, for the managed balance, it was down, you know, three point four percent versus the managed growth last year was down almost five. Not an awful year, sure, certainly felt worse than that, 'cause all the selling-off that was in the fourth quarter. Uh, but then, when you look at, you know, longer-term, you know, four-and-a-half percent for three years for the balance, and then the managed growth is a little higher, almost five, five years, we kind of have a mixed few years, there's been some okay years with some not-so-good years. So, in five years, you got three point six versus four point one, and then the total return, when you start to look at just a bull market period of ten-year, you start to see the benefit of the managed growth, seven point three-one versus eight point six-five, and then you take it a little longer to twenty years. Remember, I was showing you before twenty-two years, because it goes back to our inception, but you'll see here, you add in two bear markets, two thousand eight, as well as the two thousand one tech crash, and your differential narrows once again to five point six-three versus five point seven-eight. So, you know, it's generally gonna be somewhere in the long-term between one percent, um, to two percent, maybe higher for the growth, but if you measure it after a really tough year and you have two bear markets and one bull, you probably have a little bit more, you know, more narrowness. It'll fluctuate, you know? And then, going back to my original point, on page sixteen, you know, you can see year by year, and I won't walk you through every year, but this is the balance and the growth calendar year. And as I said, if you look at two thousand eight, and you're sitting in the room, and you've got a significant amount of funds, 'cause you've been contributing to an OPEB for, let's call it a, a decade, and, and you think that, you know, after a year down twenty-six percent, the markets were down forty, but this is down twenty-six percent, you know, if, if, you know, if they're gonna have a hard time getting the, getting the continuous funding, you're better off, you know, doing something more like the balance. You have to sort of be recognizing that human element, because the human element is usually the biggest risk to every investor, quite frankly. Uh, and there's no difference between an individual and a committee in that regard, except for maybe it's a little less emotional, 'cause it's not their personal money, but it's still very difficult, um, to get people, you know, rally around continuing contributions a, a, after those difficult years. Conversely, you know, you have a year like two thousand thirteen, and you're up twenty percent, uh, in the, in the growth, and you're up fourteen in the, in the balance, you're probably still happy in either scenario. And so, you, I just gotta point out the nuances of, of, of the fluctuations of good and the bad years, and how that can impact you. Um, I hope that covered it. Our process, as I said, I wanted to sort of close with this, it's a fourteen-person investment committee, and that is very unique. I've, I've worked at a lot of large organizations over the years, and, um, sometimes they have a lot of resources, but they're very broad. Um, you've got one portfolio manager selecting from a big, huge universe of, of selections, so in essence, it's still all contained in that single person, where with what we do, we have, uh, all different responsibilities, uh, within the committee, and we're all, you know, sort of tackling this problem together, and then delivering it to you individually. But really, if you look across our individual client, you know, relationships, we're doing things very similar, uh, using our best thinking, um, you know, as a, as a team. So, I think that's a lot of value in that, in that depth versus broadness of, of our, of our institutional investment management process. So, you know, and then there's some contact information, I think, Margie mentioned.
Any other points, Rosen? Any questions?
Yeah, thanks for coming out tonight. Um, so, this is fantastic. One thing I'd definitely like to ask, um, that maybe you can help clarify, um, for the dozens of people watching at home, um, is, you know, a, a lot of, there's been a lot of talk about investing in OPEB being a good strategy, but something that it's unaffordable by the district or by the towns right now. Could you sort of explain a little how and why it's actually not affordable to ignore and to keep pushing down the road? Does that make sense?
Right, sure, yeah. It's, uh, it's not a popular subject, um-
Right.
-for any size municipality, any city, whether, you know, two-year mayor wants to come in and talk about this huge liability. Um, it, it's really important for the, um, school district to show fiscal strength. Um, it's also about your rating, if, if you, with any borrowing going on, you know, S&amp;P would come in, Fitch, Moody's, and they would look at this liability. And now, it's, it's right up front on your balance sheet. It used to be down in the footnotes of your reports, and now it's upright and, up front and center. And, um, there's also a change with Gatsby seventy-four and seventy-five, sorry to bother you all with this language, but, um, it's gonna be tied to the twenty-year high-quality municipal bond rate, which is a lower three point two percent, which, if, if you tie it to that without doing anything with the liability, I mean, with your investments, the liability's gonna increase significantly. So, we work with Parker Elmore, um, very frequently, as I mentioned, and he understands how, uh, Rockland Trust manages the portfolio, and given a certain asset allocation, he would give a more favorable discount rate, which is just something that he will target to long-term assets, and that will lower your liability.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to dumb that down even more. I draw pictures for a living, so. Um, and, and again, I, I think there's just a lot of confusion here, so, you know, while we have you guys in the room, I'd just, um, love to take advantage of, of your knowledge-
It's basically a liability that, that no one's saved for. You have your pension-
Right.
-right, and you're saving for that, and you're held accountable for that, and then the other post-employment benefits are something that have not, um, been really paid attention to. It probably came to the limelight six, seven years ago, you know, when all the rating agencies came in and said, "Look at this liability, it's huge." And, um, you know, we've taken checks for five thousand dollars, um, you know, some smaller school districts that just wanna get, you know, draw a line in the sand, they want to show that they're working towards a liability, and, and that's really what your actuary is gonna wanna see is, is you have it, you've adopted the language, simple. Um, you have a funding plan, it could be a line item in your, um, budget, every year you're gonna donate a certain amount. Some towns will donate, uh, percentage of meals tax, hotel tax, something like that, to show a consistent funding source, and again, that will impact your discount rate, which will impact your liability. But if you don't do anything, it just kicks the can down the road, and it's only gonna balloon.
If I could add that, too, I mean, affecting the, how the liability's presented on your balance sheet is, you know, is, is a positive to make that look lower, but you, but at the end of the day, the expense is the expense, and if you're not saving for it, um, you know, you're, you're accruing, you're accruing something that's gonna eventually come, come to your head. I would, I would say it's sort of like, you know, getting a thirty-year mortgage where you don't make a payment till the end.
Yep, yep.
You know, you, you gotta start putting the money in there, accruing the, getting the equity side of that better in favor to strengthen your balance sheet, just like you would as a homeowner. So, if something happens, right, you have equity in the home now. You wouldn't have had it on a thirty-year, where you, you know, you get a balloon payment of all the interest and everything you do over thirty years. I think the expense is there, and to not, not do something about it is, is not very responsible, and if you can do something about it and then, and then impact the accounting side in a positive way, that's just an added benefit-
Right.
I think that is perfect.
That nailed it.
Thank you.
That's why he's on NECN, if you haven't seen it.
I think that's really what we, what we needed, thank you.
And he wants to go on your brochure-
Yeah, right, I know.
... through your mortgage job at the end. Can you-
Yep.
-make an analogy to, um, is there such a thing as OPEB in a, the private sector?
No, most private sectors would have your 401K or, you know, an employee self-directed-
But back in the day, there was pensions, absolutely, and there's, there's also companies that funded, uh, health insurance for, for, like, there's some that still do for the executive side, too, and there's executive benefit, uh, programs as well, and they do fund those. Uh, and they do have to, you know, account for if they're fully funded or not in their balance sheets. Um, so, there, there is, it's declining, but then it's different, so I don't wanna say it's the same, but it's a similar concept. And if you're a company that never put any money into the pension, uh, you know, along the way, but was promising it all along, some didn't do a good job as they should've, um, but most of them at least have kept close to where they need to be, um, that, that would be something similar.
And so, the money that we're saving for isn't going to be all spent at one time, the way a balloon payment on a mortgage would be. It'll be paid out over time annually to cover benefits annually, is the way I understand it, and not even the money, but the earnings on the money.
If that's the other part I didn't even, I left out, a comment about factoring. You just saw the returns on the page, you know, there are five, six, seven, depending on the allocations and the time horizons. You know, that's gonna help you actually spend, you know, spend less capital and use interest and, and, and income and growth to, to, to fund part of that liability in the future, versus if you don't do that and you're getting, you know, whatever rates you can get at a bank, uh, or even if you're not saving at all for it, you're not getting anything, um, you're gonna have a real hard time, you know, meaning this actually, to Margie's point, that's how it helps on the accounting side, is factoring some level of return function, um, and traditionally, that's come through over a long period.
So, it's, to me, to me, I'm thinking of it more as like, saving to make a down payment on a home, that I'm then going to be paying the mortgage, because if I have the money to start off with, then I can afford to pay a little bit each month, but if I started out my mortgage really big, I couldn't afford to make that cash flow work.
Yeah, I think that's a fair analogy, as well, I mean, but just the concept of not saving for a future liability-
Right.
-in case you're saving for future equity, which is-
Right.
-but, you know, I think we all know, if you wanna, if you wanna pay for something in the future, you know, the money doesn't fall from the sky, it has to be funded.
So, uh, so a good analogy might be a five-twenty-nine account, when your child is born-
Right.
-and you contribute fifty dollars a month in principal, and you invest on either a balance or an, an aggressive strategy over the course of eighteen years, you're gonna, you're gonna generate earnings that might double or triple the principal, and then the, the pool of money, which wouldn't have been there had you invested and, you know, contributed to a, you know, a balanced portfolio, uh, you wouldn't have it otherwise.
But this money's not going to be depleted. It's not like we're saving this money and then we're gonna spend it on some big future expense.
No, no, that's exactly what we're gonna do with it.
Yeah, and as you're spending-
That's why we're, that's why we're investing and generating earnings.
So, we're trying to save, we're trying to save up thirty million dollars, because we've got a thirty-million-dollar bill coming due in thirty years?
No.
No, it's not all due in thirty years, but thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty- so, you'll actually be spending and saving in the future.
Right.
Um, you know, but you gotta start saving, so you have something to spend, uh, later. You know, the example, I think you were running with the 529, would also be applicable to an IRA. If I say I'm going to retire, I'm going to live off my IRA every year from the time I'm seventy till I'm ninety-five, if I don't put a penny into it, I'm not going to be able to do it.
It's not going to be there, right.
And so if I do put the money into it every year diligently, when it comes time, if those expenses come due in my life and I don't want to work anymore, I've got an IRA distribution that's required, and I take it and I live off it, but you have to have the savings to get there. And then that is an annual, you know, you get an annual distribution from your IRA to live. There'll be annual distributions from this to pay for the health, healthcare expenses that are on the balance sheet.
So what we have today, Michelle, is we've got approximately a thirty-five-million-dollar liability that's only going to grow in the next three years, or thirty years, to an approximate hundred million dollars. So to counter that and to be able to afford those expenses not through our operating budget, this is a vehicle that we're going to use to invest money now and invest it in a fair, hopefully in a fairly aggressive way, to create earnings that will generate enough of a, of a fund to fund that future liability thirty years, forty years from now. That's what we're doing.
So, we're investing for people that are currently employed?
We're investing for people that used to be employed, currently employed, and will be employed in the next thirty years and into the future. This is a very long-term strategy.
And so if we put money in this year, will any of that money be used next year to pay for the liability for the employees from the past?
No.
Okay.
No.
So.
So we will, so the proposal, the recommendation was to invest two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars this year, increase that by two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the next four years, till we get to a plateau of one-point-two-five million dollars, invest that one-point-two-five million dollars in a consistent way, and generate earnings through an investment strategy that we choose, and then in approximately fifteen years, take the money that we're investing in our non-teacher retirement accounts, Essex Retirement, which will approximately be one-point-five million dollars at that point in time, take that money, once that pension fund is fully funded, roll that into OPEB. So now we've got one, two-point-eight million dollars that we're going to invest every single year for the next fifteen years, and that hopefully, if we can generate around six percent earnings, we'll have created a fund that can fund that hundred million dollars that I talked about earlier, that is being projected thirty years from now. That's what this is about. If we don't do anything, then we're going to have a hundred-million-dollar liability, and we won't be able to pay for it. So it's very, a fiscally responsible strategy.
Or if you do pay for it, it's going to take, you have your.
Right.
That would be very important.
Right.
Do you work with other regional school districts?
We do.
And who do you work with?
Northeast Regional, OPEC, NOSIT Regional, Oak Colony Regional, many collaborative schools, Reed's, North River, Cape Cod Collaborative, South Coast Educational Collaborative, so. I think you're working with the right actuary who focuses on school districts and all the nuances with part-time employees and factoring out those numbers, so I'd be happy to provide references or introduce you to anyone.
So that was one of the measurement points, when we did our qualifications-based review back in the fall, and they have, they have the largest portfolio of municipal clients, whether they town, cities, regional school districts, et cetera, and that was one of the selling points.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Up next is the school resource officer, yeah, officer document review and approval.
Thanks. Travel safe.
Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt.
That's the IMA.
The IMA. And then the MOU is on forty-two.
Starts on forty-two.
So, do you guys want to talk about sort of the procedure?
Sure, so during, so during the budget cycle, we talked about some concerns with respect to documentation of cost sharing and other issues with the, with the town of Hamilton. Over the past several weeks, I've worked closely with Joe Demolevich, the new town manager, and their town council to draft the IMA and to incorporate the language that I believe was necessarily, necessarily to cover those concerns, and I'm sure you've all read the document, so I won't cover that language specifically. I've had the document reviewed by our council, and he was satisfied with, with what was incorporated.
Who reviewed it?
Tom Mullin. He's the council that I use to, he's a municipal.
Municipal.
Law expert, referred to us by Naomi's firm. I work with him exclusively on reviewing all of our contracts, the stuff that I do. So, Hamilton's town council signed off on the document, the Hamilton Board of Selectmen signed off on the document, the chief, and Lieutenant James signed off on the document. They gave the authority, I believe, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, for Joe to sign off on the document, I believe it was at last Monday's.
Correct.
Last Monday's Board of Selectmen meeting, so Joe has, Joe has signed off on the document, so at this point, we're all comfortable with the language that's contained in the document, and at this point, it's ready for the school committee's signature. The second document that goes kind of hand-in-hand with the IMA is the, it's essentially the Model Memorandum of Understanding that was prepared by the state's Attorney General's Office and passed along to participating municipalities, cities, towns, and regional school districts. The Hamilton council was satisfied with, with the document, as were I and Mike and our council, and the chief signed the document on March nineteenth, as did our superintendent. This document does not require school committee approval or signature, but it's there for your review and comment. So at this point, I can answer, field any questions on the IMA. Like I said, I think we're in a good place with respect to an agreement, thank you, an agreement around not only cost sharing and funding, but, you know, putting in place a program that I think will benefit our community, staff, and students.
So, when I was reviewing these the other day, I actually had a few things that sort of struck me. It seems that in putting these forward, we're basically allowing a police officer into our school and then really have no recourse on the officer after that. And that, that's concerning to me. So, I love the fact that we, you guys worked out the stipulation of having that one-year notice, you know, for, you know, on our end, speaking on behalf of the school committee, of course, we'd get the one-year notice if they weren't going to fund it, but on the other end, you know, we would have to give one-year notice of not wanting to continue the program. And I think right up front on the, on the intermunicipal agreement, so we're sort of shooting ourselves in the foot, where we say, whereas the school district has a need for an SRO for the district schools in Hamilton and Wenham, or in, just in Hamilton, that we, by just saying that, we sort of give, give up our right to response if the, you know, if the chief then says, "Well, you're saying you don't need it," but right here in the IMA, you're actually saying that the school district has a need. So it sort of takes away that, that power that, you know, God forbid something happened and we wanted to get rid of that, you know, needed to get rid of that person, we're relinquishing all control to the chief.
No, it doesn't say that.
Two separate pieces.
So, let's talk about selection, and let's talk about performance evaluations, and both are covered in the, in the document, David. So the selection process is a very, very robust process. And it involves the superintendent, senior administrative staff in the school, the principal, teachers in the community, and the selection of, of an officer, in collaboration with the chief. Ultimately, it is the chief's decision who he or she selects as the SRO, but it doesn't behoove the chief to select someone that, that the school community doesn't agree with, right? So that's the selection process. So once an SRO is selected, so it's very collaborative, right? So then, once they're selected, then they get into kind of implementation, integration, and performance. So there's language in here that talks about an annual performance review that's conducted by the chief and the superintendent in collaboration with one another. If an SRO is underperforming or isn't meeting the standards of either the agreement, the superintendent, or the principal, it's during that cycle that, that, you know, discipline or whatever would be discussed. So all of those things are very much covered in the MOU.
There's also a process just before the annual review piece that requires us to develop a complaint resolution process, so that if there is a complaint from someone about the school resource officer, that we have a process in place to go through to investigate and make determinations.
So I don't see the part that you just talked about.
It's on page forty-six.
No, that part I under, the part that Jeff just talked about, under how the person will be selected, which is in the memorandum of understanding, section three.
It's in the section called Process for Selecting an SRO.
Page forty-three.
Right, page forty-three, three. Structure for Government. It says, "Parties acknowledge the importance of clear structures and governance for the program. The parties agree that communicating these structures to the school community, including teachers and other school staff, students, and family, is important to the success of the program." But then it does go on to say that the chief appoints. It doesn't anywhere say that there's going to be input, that there's going to be a committee.
Turn the page, Michelle.
In endeavoring to assign its SRO compatible with the school community, the chief will shall receive and consider input gathered by the superintendent from the school, from the school, principal, and representative groups of teachers, parents, and students in addition to the superintendent.
Perfect.
Exactly, I think, is what I covered.
Thank you.
So, all right, I'll admit I looked over that.
So, so back to your second comment, David.
Yep.
So I think, so Mike and I, through the budget process, and we've talked about this several times, we believe that we've, we have a need. So that's where that language comes from.
Right.
And I think the school committee, through its five-to-two vote in the budget process, agreed with that recommendation. So I'm a little confused by that comment, but.
Well, I mean, I agree to funding a position, but I could still not like the language in the contract. I don't think they're, you know, in, in my fear is, you know, you're saying that the selection process is robust, but, I mean, I know I've gone through a robust selection process in hiring individuals that have then had to let go, you know, and that, that's just the nature of any hiring. And I just, I can't feel comfortable in sort of having the only input from, you know, so Mike's leaving in two months, and, you know, so whoever the next party or parties are, you know, having them have only an annual input and review is a little concerning if there's an immediate cause, right? And that's sort of, you know, what's red-flagging me is having the authority, you know, with our superintendent, with, you know, within our school to, you know, should an immediate cause be brought up, to have the, you know, the ability to, you know, not have to go through the chief in, you know, whatever the steps may need to be, suspension, dismissal, anything like that.
This is still an, still an officer.
Correct.
From the Hamilton department, so I imagine that the department already has a, a resolution process if.
They do.
If the officer is, if someone wants to file a complaint against an officer.
They do.
Right, can you spell that out?
We do. Lieutenant James from the police department. We do have a process. The selection for the officer from Hamilton will be made from the current officers employed. A position would be posted, selection would be made with the superintendent and the chief of police, to make sure it was a good fit for the school. If there's a complaint against an officer in Hamilton currently, we perform an inquiry into that. There's a form on our webpage, which you can access. All complaints, whether they're anonymous or formal, are looked into. We will do a thorough investigation if there's a complaint. A lot of times, we can work with someone if it's a minor incident, sometimes it might be a bigger thing that we have to look into further, and we would get back to the complaint if they were named.
And if, and if someone files a complaint, is the officer immediately put on suspension until the complaint is resolved, or what's the, imagine that he's not, he or she's still not on patrol or something?
I think if, you know, looking at this position, if there was a major, major problem, I mean, we could reassign the officer or look for someone else. I would not, never anticipate that, because we would hire someone that would be a really good fit for everyone. We do our own performance evaluations of all officers. The superior officer will evaluate them at least annually, with a couple onsite reports done each year as well. But if there was a, any complaint made, and I'm not just referring to this position as the school resource officer, if someone in the town in the last year or in the next year has a complaint, we would make an inquiry into that, would look into it.
So this is actually, my question has to do with the memorandum of understanding. So one of the things that has been discussed about the reason we need an SRO, and one of the things that the SRO would do is they would be involved in teaching and training students, and also that they would be involved in training staff on safety, and I don't see any of that listed in the roles and responsibilities, and so I'm wondering where that falls. Because to me, it seems like it's mostly just to deal with misbehaviors. Like this outlines dealing with misbehaviors. It doesn't outline sort of the broader discussion that we've had. Doesn't even really talk about security of the building.
Actually, it does on page forty-five at the bottom.
Sorry.
"SRO participate in any district and school-based emergency management planning. The SRO shall also participate in the work of any school threat assessment team to the extent any information sharing is consistent with obligations imposed by FERPA."
Right.
See information in section five. Up above, "The SRO will be regularly invited to attend, to and attend staff meetings, assemblies, and other school convenings. The school, SRO shall be invited to participate in educational and instructional activities, such as instruction on topics relevant to criminal justice and public safety issues."
And then it goes on.
So that's in the integrating SRO versus being described in their jobs, but so they will be integrated into part of the community. Yep.
Do people read this? It doesn't seem.
I read parts that I was interested in. I didn't, you know, scan it like it was, you know.
Yeah, I read it. I mean, it's, it reads fine to me.
Yeah.
I mean, the question is always going to be, you know, do we need an SRO?
Right, that was my question.
Familiarly that, the rest of the, the rest of it.
How many?
Do you have a question, though, about, on page thirty-eight, the IMA, so it says in the, in the third whereas statement, "Hamilton is willing to provide a police officer to serve the SRO for the high school, Miles River Middle School, Winthrop and Cutler." So what do you do about the Bueker?
So this is, this is the town of Hamilton?
Yeah, I know.
And it can only.
I know.
Cover.
It can only cover Hamilton's schools.
This is a Hamilton-specific SRO position.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. But Wenham has always had a police officer that has a special relationship with the school.
They have.
There is one police officer that has a special relationship with the school. They don't give it a name, SRO.
But this is an IMA between the district and the town of Hamilton.
Can you tell us how many arrests there have been at the school in the last year? Because one of the statements is that this is to, like, decrease arrests at the school.
Not that I know of any arrests, none.
All, any, how many arrests at all?
Yeah. But I didn't know of any, I was just curious.
I don't know.
What was the question? Anybody being arrested?
How many arrests?
Ah.
Was the fact that Bueker wasn't involved brought up earlier? Because I don't recall at any moment that Bueker was not.
No, it's never been discussed.
I thought it was for the entire district.
Yeah, never been discussed. I did too.
This is an agreement with the town of Hamilton?
With the town of Hamilton?
Yeah, their police, their police department doesn't cover Wenham.
That wasn't brought up ahead of.
Yeah, I thought we were going to have an SRO for all of our schools.
Stacy and I tried really hard once.
So we're only doing for four of our schools, we're having an SRO, and the other one. So we're only doing for four of our schools, we're having an SRO, and the other one is left out.
As a special relationship.
As a special relationship.
Doesn't apply otherwise.
It was never brought up that this was not going to cover all schools.
But so this IMA is really.
For our district.
The IMA is.
I thought Bueker was included.
Really a funding agreement with the town of Hamilton, correct?
Right.
So the MOU, which is completely different, does not limit jurisdiction.
And what, what I would, what I would recommend is that the Hamilton Police Department and the Wenham Police Department put together their own MOU that discusses how the resource officer is going to work in Wenham.
Yeah, certainly, we'd, um, extend the services to Wenham. We have a very good working relationship with the Hamilton Wenham Police Department. We have for years. Um, we'd help them with programs they had and, you know, accommodate them in any way we could. I know they usually have, uh, as Michelle said, there's a liaison officer assigned here. We would work with that officer as well, uh, in every, whatever capacity they wanted. We'd do as much as we could to help them and assist them.
You know, a- again, I'm, I'm not, I, I really like this agreement, and, um, I, I think that, over the years, Mike, you and I have talked about this at great length in your office, and you've really, um, begun to change my mind about the overall thinking in needing an SRO. Um, I, I just want to put on the record that I, I'm a cops kid, so, um, and, um, you know, and, and as I said, I, I like a lot of this. I, I think that my, that the one thing that diswarms me is just about that, sort of, whether or not the district, and, and again, I, I'm, I'm in a panic mode here, knowing that Mike's leaving in two months, and Jeff could literally be right out the door after him, but that I've heard, insinuating anything. Um, and I don't know who's going to fill the seats after. And, and so it, it's, that's just where my level of concern is, is just sort of, not the accountability, but sort of what power the, you know, school maintains, or, or the administration maintains.
I feel that, you know, if there were truly a problem, I believe the Hamilton Police would address it. I also believe that parents would become very vocal, and there would be a lot of pressure that could not be ignored. I'm not convinced that we need an SRO. However, um, if the town of Hamilton wants to spend their money on it, I'm not opposed to them doing it.
Like I said, my, my idea of, like, funding it in, in the wording are, are two different things, you know? Again, I'm not against the program, it's sort of just that.
There's nothing, there's nothing.
You know, I, I don't know if you're going to be here for much longer, you know, and then the chief, and like, you know, who's, who's going to be coming in afterwards?
He still has a kid to put through college, okay? He's got to keep working.
I'm in this district for another ten years, right? Rocko's in second grade, ten years, and then I'm out, then I don't care.
It's free to. But. Um, you, like, to address the concerns, if a, if a principal in the school who's in charge of the whole school had a problem with an office that we placed there, we would take that very seriously. We would talk to that, it would be a conversation with the chief of police and that principal. We'd make sure we came up with a working, you know, resolution to make sure it was a good fit. That's, you know, that's the outcome. We want to have a very positive outcome for the community and the students and the schools. We work in collaboration with them.
No, I mean, I, I, I love the idea. I mean, I like the idea, when I go, everyone knows I spent a lot of time at Starbucks in North Beverly. In, in there, I know the majority of the Beverly Police Department now, just from seeing them in there. And I like that, you know, I, I like the availability of having that, and I love the idea of having.
I think it's going to be a great program.
You know, and, and I do too. And like I said, so my, my sort of concern is more in, you know, in, in just making sure that I'm doing my job in sort of covering.
I, I understand, but I can assure you, um, if there was a issue, the superintendent or a principal of the school, we would take that very seriously, and we would make sure we had a good fit for the program.
You know, David, I appreciate your concern around kind of on-the-ground leadership, but, you know, trust that there will be capable people in place going forward, and we can't let, we can't let what's currently happening handcuff us, right? We need to move the ball forward.
There's enough specificity in this document that outlines how people are going to go move and act and.
And the MOU was written for a statewide, by a statewide representative, so that it's pretty consistent, so.
I mean, it, it was, it was a collaboration between the Attorney General's Office, the Department of Education, and several other agencies to create, create what I thought is a, is a really robust, transparent, and really detailed document.
That's what I said, when you read it, like, I really didn't.
There's a lot in this.
Yeah, yeah, I've read it several times, but, um, and then the IMA is just, it's kind of, you know, it runs concurrent with the MOU.
Yep.
And it's just housecleaning, you know, it, it talks principally about.
Yeah, how it's going to get paid, and how if we change our minds, things are going to happen, it's fine.
Supervision and costs, and some of the things that we were talking about when we got together earlier, so there's, you know, no new surprises in there. You know, I've seen these guys, you know, the two departments work together, and they work, they work together like, like they're one. I mean, they are integrated, not just the police department, but the fire department.
So, for example, we did.
Stacy and I tried to get them integrated very closely, it just didn't work out. It just didn't work out. It's not what the townspeople wanted.
Right. But, but for example, Alice drills at the middle and high school, Wenham Police were there, and it's in Hamilton, and they were running the drills right alongside the Hamilton Police Department.
Yeah, we have a great working relationship, and we do a lot of training together, which is really great.
And you have a, an agreement to provide coverage if, if, you know, one group of officers is busy and there's a need in the town, Wenham officers would come and cover.
We have agreement in with all our surrounding communities, and we work very, very closely with Wenham.
Right, so.
If there's ever a need back or forth, we accommodate each other.
And you live in Wenham and drive all the way up there, so you're familiar with the town.
All right, so do we need a vote on both?
The vote on the.
No, just the IMA.
We mean on the IMA, yep.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Howard, let me speak.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, officer, thanks.
I also want to, you know, thank Sean and, and the Board of Selectmen. I mean, it was, I think, our initial work and continued work through Joe and counsel that made this come together really, really fast, so, um, and we agreed almost on everything. So, it was great.
Anything, you want to add, Sean, here, while you're here?
I didn't go along here. Sean Farrell, Board of Selectmen, Hamilton. Uh, yeah, working with Jeff and counsel and everything went really smoothly. There's only a few little tweaks to it, just kind of minor language stuff, uh, and like Michelle said, it's all kind of straight from the state with the MOU. The IMA is all the kind of nitty-gritty details of it. Really looking forward to bringing an SRO and a positive influence in the school system, role model, et cetera. I mean, it, there's, it's going to be tenfold the benefit we're going to get from this program. Uh, one thing I'll say before I go, you guys are going to vote on this, hopefully in favor of it, uh, and then Jeff, there's a portion where you guys are going to recertify some of the cash moving from your budget.
That's a different issue.
Different issue.
Different, different line item on this, on this agenda.
This is MOU, IMA.
Fast forwarding, I guess.
Yeah, and then there's going to be a discussion around the budget.
Perfect. Just want to make sure that happens.
It's on the agenda next.
That's the next discussion.
I'll be here.
Are there other individuals you brought with you that would like to be on TV? No? Okay.
He just shook his head.
No. All right, so, uh, why don't we make a motion?
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee accept the school resource officer document as, um, an Exhibit C.
Second.
All those in favor? It's five opposed, abstaining. All right, now.
Got the paper to sign, it'll be coming around in a second.
So we got three copies to sign? If everybody could, we're going to start with Michelle, we'll just sweep it that way. Peter, if you could give it to me when you're done, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So now, um, Hamilton has been gracious, or gracious enough to really expedite the process, we'll put it that way, in fully funding the resource officer, which as we know, um, was a part of our initial, um, FY twenty budget that was already voted and approved by the school committee, so now we have to, um, well, actually, I'll let Jeff explain so I don't trip all over.
Do you want to, do you want to do slides or just talk about it, so? So in anticipation for this conversation and an approval of the IMA, uh, we've prepared a, um, a revised, uh, recommended budget, uh, for FY twenty, uh, that basically, and we had discussed this previously, as a potential, uh, option down the road, uh, back in January and February. So what we've done is we've, um, prepared some revised slides that reduce your appro, adopted budget from February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, to, uh, back out and reduce the budgets by the seventy-three thousand dollar placeholder that we had incorporated, uh, for SRO-related expenses. Sorry.
All right, we got it.
So you have the slide, the abbreviated slide deck in your presentation, so I'll just breeze through it real quick for the benefit of the twelve people on the.
And so it's on the screen, if the people on TV, yeah.
So this, this slide should be familiar to you. Again, it's amended by, downward by the seventy-three thousand dollars associated with the, the original placeholder. So, um, the original superintendent's recommendation and the budget that was adopted by the committee on February nineteenth, uh, thirteenth, sorry, uh, included Level Services plus OPEB Trust Fund plus SRO. We backed out the SRO, uh, yielding in the last sentence, uh, for FY twenty, Level Service plus OPEB translates into a spending increase in our gross operating expenses after offsets of one million, nine hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, or five point nine seven percent versus the FY nineteen budget. And then the footnote reads, reduced by seventy-three thousand in expense associated with the SRO program, which was previously approved on February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, nineteen. Next slide. So this, uh, this financial statement, um, has been amended, um, for the same, specifically the same reason. So the top section's been reduced by seventy-three thousand dollars. The bottom section, uh, the net assessment, uh, has been reduced on a gross basis by seventy-three thousand dollars. The Hamilton budget, um, the apportionment calculation, uh, is sixty-four point zero five percent, which, uh, thank you, Peter, uh, which equates to forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars has been reduced. On the Wenham side, which represents the balance of thirty-five point nine five percent, um, their assessment budget has been reduced twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-four thousand, forty-four dollars for a total of seventy-three thousand dollars. Yielding a total increase of four point nine percent in total assessment over prior year. The next slide is simply, um, the required DESC category worksheet, and, uh, that, that worksheet is amended, uh, in only two places. The top line, Administration, that's where that seventy-three thousand dollars filtered through. That's been reduced by seventy-three thousand dollars, uh, from a hundred and one thousand dollar increase to the presented twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollar increase, um, yielding a year-over-year increase, bottom right-hand corner, uh, two million, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, uh, in gross operating expense increase of six point three six percent. The last slide are amended motions to simplify the discussion. Uh, I've updated the motions with the new, newly revised numbers, uh, both the motion for, uh, expenses and the second motion for assessment. And then the bottom footnote reads, uh, for the benefit of those watching, um, "The motions above reduces the two, the February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, school committee adopted budget by seventy-three thousand dollars in connection with the SRO expenses incorporated therein. The town of Hamilton has since agreed to fund the SRO program in its entirety in FY twenty. As a result, we recommend," we being Mike and I, "that the FY twenty budget be adjusted to reflect this change in advance of town meeting." It's pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
So how will this now, one of the statements earlier was that this, expenses of the district have to be paid for by the district? How is this now longer an expense of the district when it was last week?
We now have an agreement that says that it's covered in a different way, just like our lease agreement.
Okay.
So one of the things that I said previously was that, in lieu of an agreement, there was no agreement, now there's an agreement. So I'm happy. We're all, we're all happy. But I'm happy that we're in compliance with the regional agreement, and I'm happy that I can report into the Department of Education, vis-à-vis our end-of-year report, and certify those numbers, because I now have this. So I'm good.
Okay.
And this is where we actually, uh, get to vote to lower the budget, so.
Correct.
Something we don't get to do very often.
Vote to decrease the budget, yes.
So this is not unlike the original vote, so you need a two-thirds vote of the full committee. It requires five affirmatives to pass.
That's correct.
So can I ask, how does this then get reflected in the town warrants? I mean, you may not know this, because it's not initially.
That I can help you.
Everything's, everything's already printed.
I know.
So basically, when we go to the town meeting floor, we'll.
Have to make an amendment on the floor?
Yeah, you just make an amendment.
Oh, amend it on the floor, and at least we'll be able to explain what's happening, and it won't show up in two places. That's the.
Yeah.
If we don't do this, it'll show up on our books and in the town of Hamilton's books, and that'll be.
Yeah, that's.
Even more confusing to people.
So, so obviously, the town of Hamilton's well, well aware of this, right? Because we're in the middle of it. The debt, the, the moment I got these documents from Joe, I emailed Peter.
Right.
So within five minutes, Peter had an email, and we've gone back and forth, so, you know, does it create some administrative issues? Sure, but everybody's been aware of it for some time now.
All right.
All right.
Are we ready for a motion?
We are.
The Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee approves the, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty, total general fund expenditures budget of thirty-four million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars. This amount includes general fund operating expenses after offsets, in the amount of thirty-three million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, and general fund debt service expenses in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars. Furthermore, the gross operating expenses of the district before offsets have been allocated to the DESI-defined accounts according, according to the summary by DESI category. Chart included in the budget presentation dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Thanks, that was a mouthful.
Second. No, I, I would like to ask a question. I have a question. So the numbers that are in that motion are different than the number that's in this grand total on page fifty-seven? And what is the difference?
Fifty-seven.
Yeah, so up there, so when we read the motion, it's like thirty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, and that hundred and thirty, whatever. And then if I look at the grand total here, it's thirty-five thousand, two oh one, four oh eight.
That number's before offsets.
So before offsets, okay, so that's.
This is after offsets, this is before offsets.
And where's the after offsets number again? Can you show me that?
This is after offset? This is before offsets?
Yep.
This is after offsets?
Gotcha.
And all of it is contained.
On page fifty-six.
Cause it's number two.
That, so the financial statement covers it all.
So the before offsets number that, that's on page fifty-seven is at the top line, and then the after offsets, which was in the motion, is the third line there.
Third line, uh, right there, okay.
Right.
Can we go back to the motion?
That's why.
Yep, those match, okay, great.
They match.
Any more discussion? So, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? And then the second mouthful.
The second motion. The Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee votes to assess the towns of Hamilton and Wenham a combined total of twenty-nine million, eight hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars as the amount necessary to operate and maintain the district, as well as pay debt service for fiscal year two thousand twenty. twenty. The district's assistant superintendent shall determine the amount apportioned to each town, and the district's treasurer shall certify such amounts to the respective treasurers of each town within three business days of the state.
Any discussion on this?
This is just to a portion of the assessment.
Right. All those in favor? Excellent. All right. Next up is the superintendent search process.
Can I ask a quick, this is a quick question. Can I ask a quick question?
Capital plan. Oh, I'm sorry, I crossed out the wrong one. I'm getting ahead of the game.
Yeah, David, can I, so when we go to town meeting in Wenham, well, a full budget will be presented, right?
Mm-hmm.
And two override votes will go forward.
Correct.
Are we going to, are those going to be amended? Or are we going to have to amend our budget that is being allocated to us under the levy limit by the seventy-three thousand? Or does it matter?
It's up to Wenham how they want to do this. However, if they vote the higher number, the school committee can't spend it anyway because you just voted lower.
Yeah, that I understand. I just.
It doesn't really, it doesn't matter. It's up to them how they want to do it.
So they own, the boss, the OS owns the warrant?
Yeah.
It's up to them how they do it. But the way it's currently structured, Article One has eighty grand.
Of school funding.
Of school funding.
Yeah.
Of the total amount, and under its levy limit, right? Article Three is for the rest of their share of level services.
Yep.
And then Article Four is specific to their share of OPEB.
And SRO.
And SRO. So one would think if they're going to stick with that strategy.
That's where we want it.
That's what they would revise.
That's where we want it to be amended. We don't want the other one to be reduced.
That's where it would have to be amended if that's just the plan they're going to stick with?
None of the motions in the warrant book actually have any numbers in them.
Right, but they will the day of. And so we want to make a request that the one that's reduced is the one that goes with that override.
If I had a request, there would be a lot more than that.
Because if the override were to not pass, and they had reduced the one, one of the other ones, then.
Actually, it doesn't matter.
It wouldn't matter because that would be a no vote on the budget then.
If the override does not pass, it's a failed budget.
And it doesn't matter which one, right?
No, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Unless, the town of Wenham needs to allocate their full assessment, or it's a failed budget.
Or it's a no vote. Okay, so it doesn't matter, really. Okay.
And it needs to pass.
Do the pass the ballots, right.
Or fails.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so there's five elements, and Wenham.
Yep.
That have to pass.
Five chances of failure.
Or fails.
Correct.
Okay.
There we go.
Great, next.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, problem.
All right, so now the capital plan recommendation, Exhibit E. What Exhibit E is? All right, it's the list we.
It's up for, it was not our item.
Excuse me? It's not our item.
It's there.
Yeah, this is.
I just put the deck that we handed out on, was it July or January fourth in the packet, but just for a reference.
All right, so what are we thinking we're doing with this at this point?
Yeah, I printed this.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We can otherwise, it's perfect.
Well, something that we need, just discuss what we want to. I think we should, you know, funding sources, you know, we're going to be putting those four capital items through the fiscal year district's operating budget, and we're going, and then we need to discuss the rest of them as keeping, these are the priorities as what Jeff and Mike have put forward as capital improvements.
Were these prioritized, guys? Or they were just listed?
These are just listed with their.
In the potential five-year, like.
These were listed without, without any type of calendarization on them. We went back and added, at request, the categories that we had from a year ago. So critical infrastructure, safety, cosmetic infrastructure, educational program, accessibility, wellness. I think that's all of them.
Right.
And not continuously update the lists, right?
Right.
Both in terms of new projects and updating.
Estimates.
Estimates. So it becomes very difficult to keep the lists, which is long, right, current in terms of financials when we don't take action.
Right. So I know for me that, you know, when we sort of went through last year and prioritized and came up with that, what do we call it, the safety and security?
Critical infrastructure.
Critical infrastructure. It was a little annoying, just to sort of, the only reason I'm really bringing that up, the fact that it didn't pass, is I think in one of the warrant books, I just read that, you know, when, and I don't want to attribute this to the wrong group, but one of the groups, FinComms or BOS, were talking about how they didn't believe that what we deemed critical as being critical. And, you know, that's just annoying, is, oh heck, you know, to come in and say, well, you know, prioritize this for us. You know what? That's not a priority. I think you guys got to get on board, you know, when we do have the priority. And that's for outside, not at this table, just so you know.
David, could I just, I'm a little lost. So what are we trying to accomplish with this conversation?
So I don't know. I was really going to go with that right now, in that, you know, this was asked to come on. And I think that's an important point to make, where last year, you know, we did prioritize, you know, at that time, what we felt was to think that we should be putting forward to the towns. And, you know, again, a year later, get that response, and it will be in the warrant books this year, is, I'm not happy with that. We'll just put it that way. I think, you know, obviously, we're past the point of making a recommendation for this year, going into, you know, town meeting. And I think that we've discussed multiple times, and we'll discuss again later tonight, sort of a capital priorities by this school committee. And it's okay that, you know, even though some people are saying it's not, it is okay that we're not putting a capital plan in looking at a large, a potential larger picture. Because that is in itself, you know, a capital strategy. And so, you know, we want to think about that. I think moving forward, you know, after the elections and after town meeting, that, you know, this is something that we do want to make sure we prioritize as a committee. And then, after we prioritize, you know, including the new things that have popped up, I think that, you know, we then begin to work out with the different towns and coming up with a strategy with them. But I think, you know, in moving forward, we have to, you know, our fiduciary responsibility is for the schools and for the district. So we have to ourselves go through this and really believe in what we prioritize, and then move it out to the community. I don't think we want to take any steps, and this is my thought, any steps in trying to collaborate a plan before we have a clear plan from within. That's all I really, I have to say about this.
I wouldn't, through the course of the last month or so, people want to talk to me about being on the school committee. And a lot of what's being brought up is they're sharing information about the specific buildings. And so I would like to see, you know, some time, you know, maybe after the schools close or right before schools close, that we take a tour and see these things, so that we have an understanding of the things that are needed. So go and look at the sinks, countertops, and bubblers. Go and look at the sidewalk. Go and look at, you know, why the shades are needed. Go and look.
Well, I'm not entirely opposed, opposed to that.
Some of the things.
I think at the same, at the same time, you know, we're voted representatives of the town.
Right.
And at that point, you know, it should be trusted that we are acting in best faith. And, you know, at that point also, the administration, which we oversee, is also acting in best faith for the town. And again, I'm not categorically opposed to doing something like an open house, but at the same time, you know, to put that additional strain on our schools, on our administration, actually coordinate something like that. You know, there's this sort of double-edged sword of transparency within this town. Everyone loves saying, oh, you know, we want to be more transparent. And we have a tremendously transparent process. But at the same time, you know, transparency doesn't mean you get to go, you know, into the pocketbooks of the teachers inside the classrooms. You know, like, there's a certain amount of, you know, professional etiquette that you have to give, or personal etiquette that you have to give, in a trust in the system that, you know, to say that, you know, someone's not acting transparently or doing something is disingenuous. You know, and I think that's important to say. And like I said, I'm not necessarily opposed to that idea, but at the same time, to put that additional strain on our administrators, you know, and classroom teachers, and everywhere along the, you know, also isn't, it's above and beyond.
Was a suggestion to allow the public to go in and view and evaluate?
No, that we go and see the things that are needed so that we can understand and advocate for them. Personally, myself personally, I've stepped inside the Cutler School twice in my lifetime. And I've lived in town almost twenty-five years. I've been inside that building twice. I can't really speak to what's needed there. I haven't been inside Winthrop. Well, I was there once this year. It was night, and I only went to the library. I can't really speak to what Winthrop needs.
All right, I think I was.
I don't know what these things are because I don't go there.
I would tend to agree, just so we get an idea, and it helps us to advocate because we've seen it.
And some of them can't be seen.
I'm sorry.
Some of these can't be seen, but we could go and see, like, what the buildings look like.
Yeah, I just want to apologize because I thought you were sort of talking on a larger scale, too.
No, just go and see these things.
I'm okay, I don't think the idea is bad. I don't want to go in there, though, and try to validate that these are issues.
Nope.
That we need to address, right? Because that, I think, oversteps our bounds. If we're there to sort of inform ourselves, then that's, it's good. I mean, but, you know what I mean? Like, we shouldn't be going there trying to evaluate that the ramp in Cutler is a higher priority than, than a broken sidewalk in front of Winthrop. Like, that's, one, I don't know how equivalent that is. All I know is that they're both safety issues.
Yeah.
Because the ramp is too steep, and the broken sidewalk is a safety issue for people with, who, you know, are either in assisted, you know, whatever. So, but again, I don't want to try to go in there and validate that, oh yeah, that's not really a steep, steep enough ramp. Or that ramp is okay.
But we're not going to be measuring it.
I mean, sorry, that's not a steep ramp. The ramp is.
I don't want to say that ramp's okay.
Yeah, the ramp is okay. Like, if we're going to go in there to do it, for informational purposes, okay, that's fine. But I want to make sure that we're clear about the reason why we're doing this, if we decide to do this, that we're not going there to second guess.
Right.
What the list is, or to validate, or try to prioritize, like, own assessment of priorities.
I could see if you think it'll help strengthen an argument, right?
Yeah.
Where you could then go out to the community and, and just, I could see, you know, the value in that.
Well, like, I mean, Carrie, have you ever been inside the middle school? Do you know what's there and what it looks like, really? I mean, yeah, see, I haven't been to Cutler or really Winthrop. I mean, I never would have been inside Cutler if my kid hadn't gone to a camp there one summer. Like, I've, like, we don't really have exposure to what the buildings look like, how they're set up, how they're, you know, we don't really even know what they look like inside.
So we're happy to take you guys on tours, but we have normal working hours, too.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we have a very, very small team.
Yeah.
So if we can find some time during the workday, I'm happy to, you know, coordinate some tours for you guys, but it can't be at eight o'clock at night.
Right.
It's just, it just makes things really difficult for everybody.
Yeah, that's why I was, you know, if there was some time we could coordinate it, that would not be disruptive to students and would not be disruptive to other programs.
Well, I think in order to move that along, I think we have an executive session scheduled for today, for tonight. I think we should, even probably with the next committee, take that up as a suggestion to figure out, how do we then prioritize this entire list?
Right.
And figure out how to advocate for all the needs that we see.
Yep.
So that's how, that's what I would suggest, how we address this one.
Yeah.
Okay, I actually like that idea. Anything else want to discuss? Moving on, to replacing this guy, superintendent search process.
Separate.
It is separate because I did not get this done until, or done being proofed until earlier today. Excuse me, I went through about six, well, four to six different districts about what their listings looked like for superintendent and for interim, and actually in one case, an executive director. Just to sort of pick up bits and pieces of what I felt a thorough interim, you know, listing would look like. So I, we've been playing phone tag with the chair of Masco, but I mean, at the end of the day, Masco did not have an interim. So there is, while he, I'm sure, has great insight on the process looking for a full-time superintendent, I was pretty comfortable in moving forward with this, having not spoken, not spoken to him at length. So it's pretty straightforward. The only thing in here I could point out right now, excuse me, is I like the idea of some districts had district profiles. I couldn't find one for the Hamilton-Wenham district already written, and I really did not feel like writing any copy. So that's why it just says Hamilton-Wenham. So other than that, the, you know, first page is basically stuff from our website, just talking about our mission statement, our vision statement, and our core beliefs. Because I really think at the, at the crux of everything, that that's really what we want to be telling any potential candidates, that, you know, you're going to buy, buy these rules. Or, you know, we'd like you to work in achieving these goals. So then really, the meat of it falls on the second page with the successful candidate will have the following qualifications, and then a timeline. So I think, I don't know, should I read this out, or can everyone read it, or how do you want to go about doing this?
Where did these come from?
These came from, most of them.
It's from the Ashburn, what are you talking, right?
Is it for, like, interim?
This one, yes.
Yes, yes. So I did, so I had four that were for interim that I was looking for, looking through. And then, like I said, there was a couple, you know, but there was only really one that was a regional school district.
Yep.
And it was like Ashburn, when I can't even.
Ashburn Ham.
Yeah. Which I don't, they're not listed right now. I have all the Mass stuff. But I went to the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents and just searched through their job listings to really see where it was going, to put something up, to see, you know, what a timeline should look like. And I think that I hit all the major, the major points.
And David, I had pulled, I found one that on MAC that I had copies, so I'll pass it around, that came from Waltham, just for an interim posting.
Yeah, I already went through Walthams for these.
So if, it just shows, it shows a difference that's double-sided.
So the Waltham, I thought was the, the Schron, I really didn't have much at all as far as what they were looking for.
Everybody.
So I thought, I actually thought the Waltham listing was probably the least helpful out of all of them because they were, they didn't really. because they were, they didn't really, um, put a list of qualifications together.
Well, other than that, it's licensed and has urban experience.
Right, I mean, but those are the two things. So, I could apply for Waltham.
Yeah, I, um, I had found, and Glenn Kuchar had pointed me towards this one, so that's why.
I just-
As a, as a model for, I don't know.
Just as an example of the interim, not for a full superintendent, it's for an interim superintendent.
Did we make a decision at the last meeting about the, if we were allow, or if we were looking for an interim that could potentially become a superintendent, or if we were only limiting ourselves to experience superintendents that would be here for maybe a year or six to nine months? Did we make that decision the last time? I don't remember.
We didn't, we did not. We didn't decide on that. And the only thing, the only, like I said, in looking at, and I've got them all up right now, the only one that mentioned anything like that was Waltham. Everyone else just left it off. So, I think not having it on there, it tend, like I said, now we're looking at, it's eighty-five percent of the listings don't mention anything, one way or the other.
Yeah, well, it could be that-
Excuse me?
It, well, it could be that the, this one has Glenn Kuchar's name on it, so it may be that he asked them to make that sort of decision, so that's why it's there.
So, how do we want to decide going about whether or not to make the interim eligible for a perm?
I, I guess you can be silent on it until you see the candidates and then-
Yeah, we can look at the candidates.
You could say to them.
And I, you know-
One way or the other.
I, I think you'd want to have that, if you were gonna, if you were going to have it one way or the other, either, you know, explicitly can or explicitly can't. It should be right in the, in the initial post.
The expectation should be, um-
So, there's an article here about Ashburnham. It says, "The school committee member Andrew Storm agreed that committee should bring on someone with regional school experience and seek an interim that is not looking for a superintendent position, so that there could be no accusation, accusations of favoring an interim because the committee knows him or her better." So, it looks like they maybe made that decision, but just didn't include it in their posting.
Right, you know, and which leaves a really huge gray legal area, I would think. Um, but-
Or the majority of the committee disagreed with that guy.
Right.
Yeah, because I'm, because I'm looking here.
Right.
One could surmise that nobody agreed.
He, you know, like, I know in here, it's all boring to me at the moment, that, you know, um, regional experience, I believe, is in here, because I still think that's-
I've never seen it.
Yeah.
Before, well, it-
Yeah.
Well, I'll just say that I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing to allow the interim, be a candidate for the perm if he or she wants to put their hat in the ring.
I agree. If, if we intentionally say they will not be considered, what if they're a fantastic candidate and we've excluded them?
Right.
We take away our power.
That's the risk you run.
We take away our, our authority as a school committee to hire who we feel fit.
And I think I err on, on that side, you know, in not listing it.
You'll just get a different pool of candidates if you say, if you don't say that, you'll get a different pool of candidates than if you say, "We kind of only want retired people."
True. Well, do we only want retired people?
I don't know what the best qualified candidate for-
No, but you know, but you know what I mean. You know what I mean?
I know what you're suggesting, but you can't say that.
Right, right.
No, we're not, no.
You can't really say.
You can say that candidates for the interim are eligible for the permanent. You can say that if that's what you choose, but I agree with Peter.
Yeah, I did.
You're, you're limiting, you're limiting yourself, but you can say that, but you certainly can't make-
Right, because you may have someone, I mean, it's this-
Suggestion to their age.
It's the-
Or retired status.
Well, how does that-
It's a civil rights complaint.
I would never put that.
No, 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 but it, but it, but it says, you know, we're looking for someone, we're either looking for someone who has experience, who's not looking to take this permanent job, or we're potentially open to hiring someone who's looking for a longer term job, who's going to try this one out to see if it works for them.
So, if you just leave it open, that gives either way.
So, if we leave it open, then we're good to go. Then the next question is, this is a lot of qualifications for an interim.
Well, it's a superintendent. They're usually really qualified, so.
But it's a lot for, I mean, for an interim superintendent. I don't know if we need this much information.
So, I mean, a lot of the stuff, again, experiencing government relations and federal state and other government agencies,
I'd like to see this in, like, more of a two-page as opposed to three-page somehow.
I can make the font smaller.
Well, I don't want that. I want people to be able to read it.
I want you to read it.
Veranda can only take you so far.
So, the, you know, I mean, now, reality, the timeline doesn't even need to be here. But, I mean, sure, we can cut this stuff out, but at the same time, it's also, you know, part of the process that, you know.
Well, here's, this is the way you should look at it though, right? Our expecta, what are, what are our expectations?
That's the best.
Right. We want the best qualified candidate for our community. And if these are the qualifications we want, we should be explicit in saying, this is what the qualifications that we're seeking are. But that's really kind of it. I mean, it's honestly, if we just want to go with, you know, licensed and has urban experience.
Well, we don't want that.
Yeah, so, maybe they're duplicative things in the list of qualifications, but, you know, I, you know, I read this thing and I thought, and I read some of the other ones that David sent around from the other districts, were not, this is not that far afield.
When did Dave send those around?
Walthams is the anomaly. The Walthams is the outlier, honestly. The other ones were more like this.
Probably know who they want already.
What's that?
Waltham probably knows who they want already.
Yeah, they probably already had someone. It's pro forma then, right? So, that's, so anyways, that's my point, is like, if you want the best qualified candidate, we should be explicit in what our expectations are for this candidate. That's what I'd say.
Also-
That's what a job posting is.
Yeah.
Right?
Also, I think we should think about having, since this, all this timing seems to be right during elections of, you know, and changing the school committee, that we should think about having MASC to help with the interim, where they can, you know, Dorothy and Glenn is part of our, the fees we pay, it's not an extra cost, who can help us, you know, to find the best superintendent for our school district too.
Yeah, I can say that when, um, when Wyndham had somebody doing the search the last time around for this town administrator, it was actually those phone calls that they made to sort of recruit people that brought in the best candidates, so. Yeah, I see what you're saying about this list. I mean, I think these are all things that would be assumed, that someone would be good with, except for this, um, you know, regional thing. It's just long, but there's nothing wrong with it. So, the calendar here is that the posting would go out soonish.
Right.
And then they're, they would submit the deadlines, there would be this deadline for the applications, which is the end of April break, right? Is that when that is?
Uh, deadline's right before.
It's Thursday of that week.
Thursday of break week. So, then semifinalists are selected how? By us?
So, I think that's sort of what we need to hash out. I have, so that, the April twenty-four?
So, I don't, unless we're going to form a separate community-wide group, this group has to do the selecting of the semifinalists and it seems odd.
No, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I think that with a clear list like this and a HR person on staff that everything would end up going through, they would automatically sort of come up with a, you know, the shorter list to make sure everyone, that everyone's checking, checking all the boxes on the qualifications. I could be wrong, it might be worth, but I mean, I, I think that's, um-
Where it's our responsibility to hire them, I do not feel comfortable with an HR person doing that.
So, we don't, we don't, we have a part-time HR person. I serve as the HR director for the district, among many other things, and I won't be involved in this.
Okay.
So, uh, so this is the committees. We'll help you post.
Yep.
And we'll help facilitate the sharing of information if we choose to use School Spring as that repository.
Okay.
Right, which you have here, which I think is the right way to go, and I suggested the last time, at the last meeting. But beyond that, um, I think the responsibility for review, interview selection is on the six of you. It seemed to be seven.
And that's why I really think we should have MASC help us to make it easier, because, you know, with two possibly new candidate, three new candidates, we don't know what it's going to change. We need, you know, some consistency and to help with all this.
So, my only question here was, um, when is our next meeting after the election? Because that meeting-
So, I coordinated these dates with, um, meetings the best that I could.
Okay, so that meeting will be the, like, reading of the things, we'll be reorganizing. So, then that would be when you would select your semifinalists, at that very first meeting after the election? Is that what this schedule is saying?
Tenth, twenty-fourth, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, the, in putting this timeline, and again, this is obviously a draft, um, I was just sort of trying to go by meeting dates and then trying to meet, you know, give us enough time within the timeframe for a July one start. And then, like I said before, I actually wouldn't mind there being a little bit of overlap. You know, a couple of weeks just for, um, you know, so that's why I was going to say July one's the other, the other date that I have flagged. But, but again, so these are just me looking at the calendar, trying to come up with a date, with some dates to create a, you know, a draft timeline. And, you know, you're making a really good point.
I just think we're somewhat optimistic that we're going to be overflowing with interim candidates. I think you might be lucky to get three, four. So, yeah, I think this is comfortable.
But, um, you know, the other thing too is I'm trying to give a couple of weeks of, you know, scheduling some interviews, which, do you need that much time if there's only three or four? No, I mean, you could probably get it done in two days, depending on, um-
Oh, they're like forty-five minutes.
Excuse me?
It'll be like forty-five minutes a person. You could do it in one night.
Well, it, so when I sat on the, uh, search committee for the Hamilton Town manager, administrator, manager?
Manager.
Yeah, but you were on, you were on the screening committee.
Yeah, no, I was on the screening committee. So, they had a facilitator, I mean, this is for the perm position too, right? Because they had it, they had it interim, which was the chief. Actually, they had a short-term administrator interim, and then they actually found an interim who was, I think, the former Ipswich.
Yeah, Robin Crosby, yep.
Yeah. So, having facilitator really does help, because I think we can't even get ourselves together, organize well enough to do it. So, I will, you know, implicate ourselves in this.
Yep.
They will often, um, what they could do for us is sort of go through, so I mean, the best case scenario, we get, you know, a slew of applicants, like, they can go through and say-
I think you're dreaming.
Okay, let's say, let's say, for yucks.
I think we'll be lucky to get two.
For yucks, let's play this out, right? Let's say we get fifteen.
One good one. One good one.
You just need one, yeah. But the, the, a facilitator could help screen the initial ones, right? Who all, who are the ones who we should then interview, right? Provide all the materials. So, when I did the thing for the thing, for the Hamilton Town Administrator, we had, um, they gave us, the consultant gave us a list, they had like, I don't know how many candidates they had, but they gave us a list of highly qual, what they considered to be highly qualified, sort of could do it, and then not qualified at all. The screening committee looked at everything, but then agreed with the highly qualified, narrowed that down to a list of people to interview, and then from that list of interviews, ease, gave a recommendation of three candidates to the, to the board, right? So, which is not uncommon from any other kind of process that we've all probably experienced. So, I think, um, so I, I think having facilitator would really help us.
I totally agree. That's why I suggested.
Yeah, no, I-
Yeah, no, no.
Because again, I don't think we can organize ourselves well enough to do it.
It definitely makes, makes the most sense. Again, I was just trying to-
Yeah, no, no, I think it's good.
It also helps with the scheduling.
Putting this together.
It helps with the scheduling of the interviews, because sometimes it's hard to reach people. Get them coordinated with your schedule. It's, that's very difficult.
I took a day off of work in order to do this.
It's, it really is a lot of work to schedule people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so, so what we're saying is, we're going to go with this as it is?
So, that's up to you guys, but I think-
And we're going to have the, is there somewhere where it says where we're submitting the applications?
Yeah, the very last page, that's all it is, is the application process submitting.
But it doesn't-
So, for using a facilitator, do we want it all to just go to School Spring?
Yeah, I think that still makes the most sense.
School Spring is so-
Yeah, I know, but it's-
Arduous. I don't want to discourage someone who could just send in a letter.
It's a piece of cake. Attach it. Attach a PDF.
Right.
Filling out an account is a lot of work.
How about this?
Making an account is-
If we're going to use MASC as a, as a facilitator, we just should go with whatever MASC recommends?
Just send Glenn a letter.
I don't, I don't know what School Spring is.
Do you, can-
The one question I have before we sort of move on is, I was, I guess, anticipating this when Glenn was here, and I was trying to ask about what they would do and what we would have to do in order to involve them in this process, and I really didn't get a good answer.
We, I think we just asked them. It's part of our fees.
All we have to do is just ask them. And when I asked for, you know, Desi, I just emailed him, asked him if he has something he would suggest for interim superintendent, I said, "And if we chose you, are you available? What do we need to do?" He said, "You just need to approve it and then we are free to do it." It would be he and Dorothy, producer.
Okay.
Because Dorothy is our-
So, then the next thing is, okay, because then we can just shoot an email to Glenn with this. Are we comfortable with the timeline? And if not, let's change it right now, so we can literally share this up, vote on it and move it tomorrow.
I'm com-
And I know it's a lot to sort of do, but I mean, it's part of the timeline.
I'm comfortable, but should we possibly say this plus whatever MASC recommends?
Yeah, I mean, I do think that in the, in that process, right? You know, after talking to him, sort of work out with that last, um, those last edited edits, excuse me, would be, you know, because there's probably just a few.
And do you, okay, so do you want to work with him on it?
Do you want to do it? You want me to do it? Because I know you said you were busy.
I don't mind handing this off, because I have actually been swamped lately and it's been, um-
I can do it if you want me to, and-
That would be great. Thank you. I will forward this to you.
And then I can, I will CC you on what, you know, and changes, you know, I can CC everybody if there happens to be changes they recommend, and I will tell them that we're moving forward with this.
Okay, so the la, yeah, I just want to reiterate that April eighteenth, right, where that would be the first meeting back. Are we still comfortable with it or not?
It's April twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
That's the first meeting back.
So, when you finalize the job description, please forward it to our office, because we need to post it internally.
Yep.
It's a requirement of the contract.
Yep.
Yep. Does it have to be posted internally before it's posted somewhere else? Okay.
It just has to be posted for fourteen days.
The only thing, I'm like, just want to make sure the dates are, everything else.
Fourteen days internally, so if, okay. So, just-
So, how is that going to hap, how is that going to float through, through David?
Yeah, because I'll, I'll make sure.
Okay.
Because I'm hoping that Glenn thing moves in the next day or two. Like I said, if we can get this up before April one, that would be ideal.
Yep.
Which is only a couple of days.
So, what Jeff, I think, just said is that if this isn't posted kind of like by April first, that the night, the eighteenth can't really be the deadline, because he can't meet the contract, because it doesn't have the right number of days. So, if it slips, then everything slips.
So, and like I said, it's just to-
Right, if it slips, everything else slips. It's a slide.
The only thing I see changing by the MASC would be just where-
This isn't rocket science.
No, it's going to be fine.
But that's a- But that's, as I said, is where it's going. Instead of School Spring, if they said, all right, email Glenn Kuchar.
Right.
That would be the change, and I would expect that could happen.
Or they all have some major retirement party on the twenty-fourth.
Um, if it's not.
Um.
So again, and I just want that April twenty-fourth. How should we, how should we move that? We, I don't think we can push it another two weeks.
No, it's fine.
Wait, so town, so town meeting is on the sixth. The election is when?
The eleventh.
The eleventh, but then you have to wait for those things to be certified, and then we have to have a meeting.
That's on the twenty-second.
Which would be on the twenty-second, and then we would need to reorganize and pick a new chair, and then.
Twenty-fourth.
Which is the twenty-fourth meeting. So you're gonna be doing all of that in the twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Which is not a big deal. It just is administratively a lot to do.
Well, cause if, if they're going through the process.
It's fine.
It just sort of needs to just approve, right?
Fine. It's totally fine.
So I guess we could do that.
It's totally fine.
We could even, that eighteenth, we can buy a couple of days if we needed it to.
Uh, I would make a motion if you would want to entertain one.
Do you wanna do an emotion, Michelle, since I'm, if I'm gonna do it?
Can I ask a procedural question? With the semifinalist interviews, is that done in front of the entire committee, to certain committee members, interview them?
It would need to be the whole committee. It would have to be the committee of the whole. Because we couldn't take a s, if you did it, yeah, that was one thing Glenn said here. It had to be done by the committee of the whole.
There was one stipulation that I didn't put in here.
For interim, for a regular one, you can do a different situation.
And that was that, um, the, the one thing that I didn't put in here that I didn't see till after was, someone actually had put that, all candidates would be, um, how did they phrase it? Publicly.
Yeah, announced.
Yep.
Right, because the full committee is going to be interviewing that, so you cannot have it in executive session.
Right, so that, so that would mean we have to interview them. In, all right.
Right.
So maybe, let me try and.
So on the, on the Waltham notice, it says candidate should be advised that school committee will make application information,
Yep.
information and interviews public.
All right, I'm gonna, I, I think I'm gonna add that to this.
That's exactly what needs to be on here.
For semifinalists and finalists?
So, yes.
Finalists for sure.
Because.
Interview them in open, in an open meeting.
Because we are not setting up a committee to advise us.
Got it, yes.
We cannot.
Got it, got it, got it.
Have that in executive session, cause it's us who is being.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And because it's an interim, setting up a separate committee is just crazy.
That may.
That may make it harder.
That may detract some folks from the plan.
It, it may detract someone who's got a job, and is planning to stay unless they were to move. That, that happens. So.
That's not normal.
What?
Doing what you guys are talking about.
Well, it's normal for interim.
Normally, normally the, the process is confidential until finalists are announced. That is normal practice.
So, but can we?
You can do whatever you want, but it may detract from the pool.
No, 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 no. What I'm asking is, how could we, as a full board, interview semifinalists?
You can't. It has to be public.
You would have.
That's what Michelle's saying, so.
To set up a separate committee.
What folks do is they create a committee, an initial screening committee, like the one Gene was on. That, that isn't, doesn't meet those same standards.
Yeah, and I can see that for the perm position.
Yeah.
Yeah, and for the permanent position, you would absolutely do it that way.
We should, we should have a broad committee interview.
Yep.
So I'm just warning you that it may detract people.
Yeah, no, and I can see that also. So how do we wanna solve that problem?
Yep.
Which is another reason why interims are not gonna get a lot, and they're kind of tricky.
Um, so, you know, but how do we wanna solve that problem? Do we wanna create a subcommittee, or do we want to?
No, we do not wanna.
We do not.
We do not wanna have to recruit people from the community and people from the staff, and.
Not for the interim.
Not for interim, but for the.
Not for the interim.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement with that.
For the regular superintendent search, yes.
So then I think it, we need a list.
Yep.
At that case.
Oh, it's totally, yeah, I just want, I'm just.
No, I know, and I appreciate, I appreciate, you know what I mean, cause obviously this is.
You know, for someone that's been in, in, you know, private industry for the majority of their career, right, that's not how it happens.
Oh, no, I understand.
It's different.
I understand.
There's, none of that stuff is.
The meeting is really different.
So if the chair's interested in a motion, I'll make it.
I know I'm looking up, staring at it, but I can't find it. Make up, oh, there it is.
I think you heard me.
Okay.
Yes.
If the chair's interested, we can make a motion.
So, yes, definitely. I'm sorry, I'm trying to add this.
Michelle, you wanna make a motion?
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee post the position of interim superintendent with the assistance of the MASC, to be coordinated by Stacy Metternich, and communicated to the chair and to the, uh, what do you call, you're called the assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent, with the date stipulated on the exhibit, which I will now hand to you.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Stacy, I'm sending this to you right now.
So if you're a retired superintendent and you're watching right now, there is.
Are you ready for me to do motions for donations?
Yes, please.
Yes. I happen to know there is a retired superintendent living in town.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from DECA for the amount of fourteen hundred and twenty-five dollars to help in defray the cost of participants' trip to Boston.
Second.
God love you, thank you.
All those in favor?
Thank you, DECA, for helping that out.
Well, it's not DECA, it's all of these people in our exhibits.
Yes, all the people on the exhibit, sorry.
Yep.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from Hamilton Wenham Ed Fund for the amount of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents for supporting kindergarten class for all elementary schools.
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous.
Thank you, Ed Fund. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve or accept the donations from the Friends of the Arts for fifteen hundred dollars for Bosama Identity Workshop in the Miles River Middle School.
Second.
All those in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Friends of the Arts. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from the Hamilton Wenham Girls Basketball Boosters in the amount of fourteen hundred and fifty-two dollars to help with funding a point-five assistant coach.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Hamilton Wenham Girls Basketball Boosters. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the Hamilton Wenham Boys Basketball Donation of fourteen hundred and fifty-two dollars to help with funding of a point-five assistant coach.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Boys Basketball Boosters. I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the donation from Arbella Insurance Agency for three hundred dollars to support transportation to the BSO Youth Concert.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you, Arbella Insurance Agency.
All right, uh, committee reports, I heard the, yeah, Polisi, Polisi, my Italian, right, the Polisi. Had a eventful meeting.
We did.
Yep. We met on Monday. Dorothy Presser was there from MASC. We started working on section A. We also addressed the, talked about this, the.
Transportation.
Transportation of students and private vehicles policy. And I think we're still deliberating the issues on that one.
Yep.
That's it.
Okay, um.
Well, there's a little more to it than that. That we decided that we would go through, with the MASC, we would go through each section, and then we would present to the school committee each section, instead of individual policies, so that we could approve them in whole, Dorothy used that term in form. So then, then, when we approve them, we'll just replace the whole section. And it'll help us to build that searchable database that we're gonna be getting for the money we're spending, so. And we also made the decision to use the pronouns he, she.
Can I ask a question on that? For that transportation, the H eight oh two-two that you guys talked about, was there suggestions how to modify it or problems? Because I do have to say that, you know, I just wanna make sure that coaches are not advising to have this done, or they know about this policy, is my point. Because it was stated in our sports meeting.
So I think we identified a multitude of issues.
Mm-huh.
And we're trying to narrow it down to make it the most conservative yet useful when it's needed.
Yep.
It really comes, I, my, for me, it was more, I was under the assumption that we were talking about potentially students and parents transporting, but it's really a staffer employee who would need to, to be doing the transportation, and then it also has to come by way of notice to the superintendent who approves the alternate transportation. So I think we thought that there were very limited circumstances where it would actually come into play, but we also talked about, you know, a one-to-one ratio in a car. Is that okay to have a male coach driving a female student? I mean, there's a lot, we, I mean, we really.
No, totally understand.
Deliberated on that particular issue for quite some time, so.
Yeah, that's why I think it's really important to figure this out and done the right way, and we need to bring tennis closer to us, because being almost in Rowley is so far away.
So my, well, and that was one thing Gene said, wow, this really, you know, we, all of the bus transportation to and from all these locations really makes an argument for why we need to bring things on, on, to campus. Dr. Harvey, her question was, did the, do the, are the coaches aware of that policy? Do you know, or how would we know that they were know?
I don't know. I can check with, with.
Does Dorothy have any suggestions? Craig on that? Okay, yeah, thank you.
Other people have done that?
She, she did. I think we took issue with their.
Their model.
Their model policy, we didn't like.
We didn't think it was sufficient enough.
Correct. And Peter, to answer your question, I think we had thought about including like a permission slip, if you will, either to children who are participating in athletic events at the start of the school year, when they would be signing their waivers and such. But I guess we also then had to consider, you know, activities like DECA or music programs. So we're not just looking at student athletes. It really encompasses.
Everybody.
Everybody, and.
Transportation.
How we're gonna figure that out, so. And also, you know, liability insurance and registration of vehicles and valid driver's licenses. I mean, there really was.
And a query, and a fingerprint.
So it's.
That's an issue too.
It really.
That's a briar patch.
Yeah, it was a very, much more extensive of a conversation than I expected, but I think it's warranted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think we just talked about the capital planning, finance of Turfield. I think we just did it twice too, mentioning that tennis needs to move back on site, so.
Yeah, I was convinced. I was convinced.
You gotta get that campus gone.
Fields here weren't usable.
So everyone should take a tour of Lindfield and see how our field should look.
Oh, I see Lindfield all the time with sports.
They have, they have a very nice adjacent property. So does Manchester have a very nice adjacent field.
I just love that Lindfield.
Adjacent is a word I'm gonna use a lot tonight. It's adjacent.
All right, so negotiations. So we're gonna obviously move into an executive session in a little while. But I think that it needs to be stated that we are currently sort of in a bad spot as a district, as a school committee, rather, in regards to negotiations. Excuse me, there is a, um, at least one open contract negotiation.
Just one.
So, whether or not you would call that a second. That needs to be taken care of, and I've been sort of pushing off in, in answer with, to give the custodial union a, a, a strong answer in that I really don't know what to do. I, in, in, you know, trying to negotiate the contract via, you know, negotiation committee, or, you know, have hiring representation to actually represent the district in that. It, it, it's a serious issue that, you know, we really need to think about in how we're gonna move forward as a committee and a subcommittee regarding this issue. You know, that, that's where we are right now. We, we have, again, the, the executive session coming up, but we have that other contract that I really don't know how to move forward on.
Is there any way to get, can we have Naomi represent the district in labor negotiations?
She is our labor attorney. That's what she does.
I mean, it would obviously come at a.
Have the three, has the negotiations working group met with them?
No. Like I said, it, it's a matter of how we're going to move forward, right? So I wouldn't even know, at this point, if I was to meet with them, or we were to meet with them, I really think that we'd be wasting their time, and after, you know, wasting an afternoon of theirs.
Well.
In, in moving.
Generally, you meet to discuss the rules, and then after the rules have been determined, then you dec, during the rules, you decide how many meetings you're gonna have, when you're gonna meet, what you're gonna discuss. And then you do that over the course of the next few meetings.
Well, you know, unfortunately, that was already negotiated with them.
Oh, so the ground rules and all that has already been decided?
Well, they were, right? Mike and Jeff had, had meetings set up with the contracts committee, or the, with the, sorry, with the custodial union. And the school committee decided to relieve them of that responsibility, of that authority. So we're now back at square one. So we, as a committee, now need to figure out how to, how do we wanna move this one forward.
So do we?
We didn't authorize, we, I mean, based on the last, the last vote, we didn't authorize them to negotiate on our, on the district's behalf. So we're now.
So ju, just for the record on that, so on, during that executive session, on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, I took extremely detailed notes, and I wasn't present for that conversation, so I'm gonna share my comments at the moment. So please allow me to do that. So I, I, I understand the minutes didn't reflect what was discussed, but we had a very detailed and very robust conversation around what was authorized and the direction that was given, person by person, with respect to what the upper limits of those negotiations were. And on that basis, Mike and I progressed with first conversations with, negotiations with the teachers' union, and then negotiations with the office personnel union. And then we began negotiations with, with the custodial maintenance union. And the only, my last point would be, was that when this committee discussed its goals in August, its goals from last year explicitly included negotiating successor agreements with all three unions. And that goal was stricken from this year's goals. So I have a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that we weren't given authority when the school committee knowingly struck that goal and objective from its current year objectives. So I'll leave it at that. I have detailed notes. I know, for the record and for the TV, I know that Mike and I were authorized to negotiate for all three, with all three unions, and I, and we were provided explicit directions with respect to the cap. So, sorry for interrupting you, Jean.
Unfortunately, there's an issue, though. When we went into executive session, we did not go in under all three contracts to go into executive session, only for. we did not go in under all three contracts to go into executive session, only for teacher contracts. So that would have been a violation if we discussed all three to give approval for.
I didn't violate anything. You have a conversation amongst yourselves and provide us direction, that might be your violation. I know with a hundred percent certainty that this committee or the committee at the time, which was not made up of the folks at the table, Peter wasn't on the, the board at the time, Josh was. I know with a hundred percent certainty that we were provided with that authorization for negotiating with those three unions and we were providing explicit direction regarding the threshold. So. I don't know what your minutes say, I don't know what your motion said, but I know what happened in that room. And I know that that's why Mike and I moved forward with those negotiations and the discussions that have occurred over the last six or eight weeks really is a, it's, it's an attack on our character and integrity because those, I know that those conversations occurred, so.
It was never intended to be an attack.
I appreciate that.
Always been to follow the poli-, the procedures that are required.
I'm, I'm just telling you that that's how it felt.
Yep, so in order to approve you to do it, we would have to go into executive session for that purpose. And we didn't. And the only reason I know for certain that we didn't is because I checked the motions and I checked the agenda. And the only reason I know for certain is because of what's in our minutes.
And I know for certain, based on what's in my notes from that meeting, and I know my, the standards I hold myself to with respect to my integrity and my character and to have that challenged when we got that contract to the one-inch line was, it, it was hurtful, Michelle. It, it really was.
If it's that close, then what is keeping the negotiations committee from continuing and finishing the work?
So what's.
He was referencing the secretaries, the custodians aren't that close.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's a different situation then.
It, it, it was moving along.
It was moving fine, yeah.
But the point I'm trying to make is that we were provided direction, we were provided authority. Whether your motion and your minutes included those things, I can't speak to that. But I know what we were charged to do operationally and we carried that out. And then kind of our legs were taken out from under us a year later.
If, if you moved into, you know, an executive session with the, you know, saying that we're discussing the teacher's contract and at the time, while discussing the teacher's contract, saying that the cap we put forward was to move across the board, that actually wouldn't be in violation in that it, it's, you know, inclusionary, you know, i- i- its primary purpose is for the, um, you know, the, the teachers and, you know, a- as a result, just in, um,
True.
you know, just discussion that, you know, that you could then just say, all right, this cap applies across the board moving forward. So, you know, I, I think that, I think the more important issue that still really isn't even being resolved is the fact that, you know, our administrators were made to sort of look bad and they felt that they were attacked. And that it's not even being resolved tonight, right? And, and I understand that you did just say that it wasn't meant to be a personal attack. But at the same time, you're still doubting that it ever happened. So you're still in saying that.
My recognition isn't that it was.
You're saying that it wasn't an attack out of one side.
It wasn't doubting, it was just trying to make sure it was right and I guess.
Oh, it happened.
We should have, we should think about going forward is someone reviewing those executive session minutes because from January and not to see them until November, you know, things change. You just see what, you know, is in the minutes, what's the motion, whatnot. That's what you base it on and, and the notes that you have.
I mean, I know like the Board of Selectmen, they all, as the committee as the whole, review their accession, executive session minutes and then withhold them. So that way there's not this disagreement because everybody agrees that what's in the minutes is what actually happened.
As a board, not even two months ago, we just went through this and.
Right, and so we decided at that point to have Stacy to approve them.
We would be approving them.
Right, but that was after.
That was a year late.
That was a year later. A year later when we asked if we could please have those approved by the committee. So if we prove them in a timely manner, these sorts of discrepancies could be alleviated.
It's just trying to get rid of the discrepancies.
Because I personally do not believe that when I voted in that meeting, that I voted on all three contracts. That's not what my notes reflect.
All right, so we're actually no further along in this than, in fact, I probably.
I mean, where, where we are, David, is that, you know, based on what happened, it's, just so everybody understands, it's hard for us, and, and I think I can speak for the two of us. It's hard for us to negotiate in good faith with anybody.
On behalf of this board.
On behalf of this board, when things like that happen at the very last minute in public without any prior conversation.
Right.
Right, so that was a, you know, phones were ringing off the hook the next day from the people that we work with every single day saying, what's going on, guys? You know, because we've had dozens and dozens of meetings with these folks. And you're telling me now you're not authorized? No, we, we were authorized. So, you know, it's just.
No, I, I understand that.
It had, it had several, it had a lot of lasting effects than I think what was ever contemplated.
No, I, I completely understand that and, and, you know, I, I've spoken to you offline many times about this and, you know, offered my sincere apology for that. And, you know, and, and what's sort of infuriating for me is the fact that here we are now, six, eight weeks later and we're still right at the same spot that we were. You know, we're not any closer. So, I mean, at, at this point, it's, we're costing the district money because one, it's not done and two, we're now gonna have to hire Naomi to actually do it and move forward.
I mean, based on this conversation, I don't feel any different than I did six weeks ago.
No, I don't blame you.
Yeah.
So is the plan then to wait until later?
No, the, I, we can't, I can't push them off anymore.
Negotiations gonna have a meeting or what's gonna happen?
It, it's gonna have to be.
I mean, the contract expired, you know, nine months ago, guys.
Or last August, yeah.
So, yeah.
It, it's gonna be, we have to move this.
Yeah, so we should, we should, you know, we should contact Naomi and, and ask her to, to begin the negotiations with the, with the, with the union.
And, and I think that should happen.
Yeah.
Tonight, so I can email her tomorrow, get this moving. Because it's not fair to, you know, and any of our custodians at this point too, to be working without a contract.
But it jeopardize, I mean, I should say that jeopardizes a lot of the other negotiations we have ongoing for a lot of other things. You know, if people can't feel that they have, that the people that we've tasked don't have the full faith of the school committee.
That's the feeling right now, based on what happened. I ca- I certainly can't negotiate with anybody on behalf of this particular committee and think that I, that I can negotiate in good faith because I, I don't feel like I can. And I don't think that's unreasonable.
No, I, I don't blame you. Can I get a motion to actually have Naomi do it?
And with the, of the negotiations working group?
I, I.
She doesn't do that by herself, so.
You have to do.
Yeah, yeah, the negotiations working group would have to meet with her.
Right.
You can't do it, just let her do it.
Right. But then at that point, do we even need to make a motion?
Nope.
Uh, student rep, nothing. Sure.
She's gearing up for something good.
Nothing.
The Hamilton, um.
Her mom, it's her mom's birthday.
Do you want the schools?
What, oh.
What, what was that?
Updates, David.
Other school.
Oh, it's Stacy's birthday.
The high school, middle school will, is have a meeting on Monday morning. Friends group has a meeting Monday morning, eight thirty. Dr. Harvey will be there along with Eric Tracy and, um, and Mr. Harvey.
Ooh, talking budget, all stars.
Talking budget, eight thirty.
And the CPAC is looking to have a meeting. I feel like it's April ninth. I feel like it's April ninth. Um, and Stacy Busek is working on putting out an invitation to invite people to come.
Oh, I need to talk to her.
CPAC is S E P A C.
Yes, it's S E for Special Education Parent Advisory Council, it's with an S, yeah. I noticed that in some minutes.
Yeah, and I just noticed it just now, so I was like, spell.
All right, topics for next meeting.
So you have winter sports recognition? Have you had contact with Brad Hill?
So we're playing for him.
Okay, so we're trying to get Brad Hill for April tenth to give FY, FY twenty state budget update. We'll have the submit, submissions for the statements of interest for Cutler and Winter Schools. And we have a financial forecast on, on deck.
Sounds good. Anything else?
That's it.
All right.
I do have one request. I noticed that there's a meeting to count the votes on that Monday after. Can we put it with the Thursday, the Wednesday meeting or does it have to be separated, Mike?
It's been together before.
We've split them, we've done them together, the, the new members aren't actually seated until they're sworn in and.
Which we can have someone here.
You have to, you have to meet to hear the results of the town elections.
Yeah, but you can ask Andrea and Diane to come here.
Okay.
Which they did last year and the year before, I think, two years.
I think it depends on the results of the election. So after the election. You could just, if someone could coordinate that, then you could cancel that meeting.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, so we're gonna adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy relative to the purchase of numbers one, three and five, Long Meadow Way, Hamilton, Mass. The executive session is necessary because the chair has determined a discussion in open session may be detrimental to the school committee's negotiating position. Executive session purpose number six and not return to open session.
So you need a second, Stacy's second, you need roll call though.
Yeah, roll call, Peter.
Roll call.
I agree.
Yes.
See?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Thanks, guys.